Good evening, let me call to order the regular meeting of the St. Helena City Council for April 12, 2016. Ms. Crowell, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, "One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own."
Ms. Black, roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White is absent. Councilmember Crowell.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Pitts.
Here. All right, that takes us to public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us on matters not on our agenda, within a three-minute time limit. Mr. Ellsworth.
Jeff Ellsworth-Silvener. So I've been coming down here for over two years now, talking about a county problem that is impacting our city. It's impacting our traffic and it's pulling visitation dollars from the town into our ag regions, which were never intended to be fully commercialized. In 2008, the county changed the definition of the word agriculture in the general plan, without letting the citizens know. And in 2010, the winery definition ordinance was changed. Both these changes have led to intensification of commercial use in ag zoning, and both should have been put to a measure P vote of the people, and they were not. In a sense, they repurposed the zoning of the entire county. So I'm part of a coalition of citizens groups called Napa Vision 2050 in Napa County, addressing the step-by-step conversion of ag lands to commercial use. I'm working with groups also from Sonoma County, Lake County, and Mendocino County. I also went down and met with a group in Paso Robles, two weeks ago. They're going through the same thing there. I'm hearing, I got a phone call from somebody in Virginia wine country. This is something that's spreading through wine country. What it does is it uses ag land, like a vineyard, and it puts a commercial use on there, and then step-by-step intensifies that commercial use. And so that ag zoning, in sort of a stealthy way, becomes a commercial zone. The problem is the impacts to the citizens and the environment are never addressed, or never properly addressed. The letter, I got a letter from a Paso Robles group, and what they're dealing with there is exactly what we're dealing with here. I think we have to address what's going on on the county level, if we're going to understand what's happening to our town, the impacts to our town in terms of traffic, and also, as we say, we're looking for economic solutions. We have so many more businesses being approved up valley in the county ag areas that were never intended to be. So I think we have to address that. And I've been coming down here for about two years, talking about that, and won't be stopping until we address it.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Ellsworth.
Thank you.
Any other further public comment? Okay, let me close the public comment. That takes us to reports by staff and city council. We're missing our city manager tonight, but in her place is our planning and director, Mr. House.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, City Manager Phillips is filling under the weather. She asked me to fill in. Just give a brief report from the Planning and Building Department. The general plan is intended to be public on Thursday. It will be posted on the webpage, a draft copy of the general plan. We are printing hard copies for council members and planning commissioners. We are not intending to print hard copies for the public, but we will have some CDs to purchase, and we'll have a copy available at the front counter for review. And that a study session will be held by the planning commission on the 19th to review that. No actions will be taken, it's just kind of a first blush for the community and the planning commissioner to begin to review the draft copy. In addition to that, on the 26th of this month, the short-term rental ordinance revisions will be brought before the city council for their review and recommendation for adoption. Planning commission reviewed them at their last meeting and made some minor additional recommendations beyond the input that staff had received through the previous public review process. And at that same meeting on the 26th, items to implement the housing element that was previously adopted in May will also be on the council agenda.
One question for you, and that is, when the general plan is posted on the website, will the accompanying EIR be posted as well?
The EIR is not quite ready for adoption or public review. We're imagining it'll be coming about two weeks later, but we wanted to get the general plan out to, for the public to begin to review. We had heard some input from the public that they were concerned there may not be enough time to adequately review it, and so we wanted to get that out as soon as possible. Then the EIR will be completed within about two weeks after that. That will be posted for a 45-day public review and comment period. At the end of that comment period, it will be closed. Staff will prepare a response to comments. During that same process, we imagine we may come back to the commission for at least one more study session on the general plan itself, and then we'll bring back both documents to true them up with the timing and review.
Okay, very good.
Just another question on the general plan. Will it be in a redline version or the final draft? Will it be compared to something else?
So we have a planning consultant, Victor Korniglia, who's heading that process, and I cannot say for certain that it is a redline version currently. There is a staff report that'll be published with the draft document that basically is intended as a cover sheet, but it's about 10 or 12 pages and identifies and summarizes all of the changes that were made.
Okay, very good. Ms. Pitts?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to remind everybody that on May 4th, we are going to be having our first budget hearing from 9:00 a.m. to approximately 5:00 p.m., and it will be in our fire station. In addition, we have posted a community survey. It is currently available on our website, and it's in both Spanish and English. And at the May 4th budget hearing, we will be presenting the findings of that survey. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Black?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I want to talk to you regarding going dark the month of July, or perhaps the second meeting in July. We typically go dark the second meeting in November and the second meeting in December for the holidays, and we typically go dark one meeting in August. So I just wanted to present to you tonight, just for you to think about going dark the whole month of July or the second meeting. It's appropriate business. I did a survey for cities throughout California, and there's 39 cities that go dark one month or the other, July or August. It's appropriate business, and just for you to take into consideration tonight.
All right. Do you want a discussion of that right now?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Does anybody have any strong preference?
My, it has certainly, it's been until the end of August.
Oh, I'm sorry. So it's for you, for consideration, and we will agendize it and bring it out.
Oh, okay, very good. All right, that's what I wondered.
So you think of it, think amongst yourselves alone, and then we will agendize and we'll talk about it further later.
All right.
How's your blood pressure now?
Mr. Brown? Mr. Palmer? Mr. Pitts? Crowell?
No, thank you.
No, and the mayor has nothing either. So...
Mr. Mayor, we do have other staff members.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead. Ms. Arias?
Good evening, council. I'd like to announce it's summertime, so we have a, our summer newsletter for 2016 is available right now. I currently went to all the schools last week, and it's online as well, so all summer registration is currently going throughout the summer, so we're very excited about all the different types of camps and programs that we have offered this summer. So we've got a full schedule ahead. Also, part of the springtime, it's bocce season, so our first day of bocce is May 1st, so it's around the corner, so we are prepping those courts, ready for game play. So we've got another 110 teams ready to go, eager to get started, so we're very excited about that. So May 1st is the big opening day, and then also our adult softball is about to begin also on May 9th. So we're full swing in spring and summer programming.
Sounds good. My team made me go out and practice on those courts just last week.
Did they already?
Get a leg up.
Yes. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further staff reports? No? Okay. That takes us to presentations and public recognitions, and we have two proclamations. So...
You and the commission? Would I come close?
Thank you so much, yes.
Okay, good.
Nice to see you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and so typically, we turn this around a little bit. And, let's see, have I got the, here you go. Okay, we're all set here. Proclamation, National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 10 to 16, 2016. Whereas in 1981, President Reagan first declared Crime Victims Rights Week to help focus the nation's attention on the impact of crime on victims. And, whereas crime can touch the lives of anyone regardless of their backgrounds, and many victims face challenges in finding appropriate services. And, whereas crime imposes devastating emotional, physical, financial, spiritual, and social impact, not only on victims and survivors, but also their family members, friends, neighbors, schools, and the entire community. And, whereas this year's theme, Serving Victims, Building Trust, Restoring Hope, emphasizes the importance of honoring the rights of victims, providing and locating necessary and appropriate support and assistance, and helping to restore their hope in the process. And, whereas the Napa County District Attorney's Office Victim Services Division is joining forces with victim services providers, criminal justice agencies, and concerned citizens throughout the county of Napa and America to raise awareness of victims' rights by observing National Crime Victims Rights Week. Now therefore, I, Alan Galbraith, is mayor of the city of St. Helena, to hereby proclaim the week of April 10 through 16, 2016, as National Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm Napa County's commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights, to address their needs during National Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and to express our appreciation for those victims and crime survivors who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve our response to victims of crime and build a more just community, dated April 12, 2016. So, there you are, and if you would like to say a few words, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor Galbraith, members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the District Attorney's Office and our Victim Services Manager, Yuka Kamishi, we appreciate the recognition. It's unfortunate that we have to have National Crime Victims Week and the next proclamation we're giving hearing regarding Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This is also Child Abuse Prevention Month, so there's a lot of themes around victims. And the important thing is to look at the great work that's being done around our communities here in Napa County. I'll have Yuka address a little bit about the services that we're offering, but, you know, in an ideal world, we wouldn't be talking about having to take care of victims. The most important thing to us is that we do everything we can to help victims not only become survivors, but to become thrivers. And victims in the state of California have a constitutional right to be informed of what's happening in their case, to have a voice during critical stages of proceedings, to be able to speak at sentencing hearings, to give impact. So we've come a long way from 1981, when President Reagan first put the words victims and rights together, because as we know, defendants have all kinds of constitutional rights, and at least in California now, victims have constitutional rights as well. Last night, we had our kickoff event for Crime Victims Rights Week, and I wish we could have had all of you there as well. We had an original documentary film called The Voices of Napa County. We had a number of voices from community leaders, from victims, from service providers, in terms of what they're doing to help victims and how we can do a better job in the future. And perhaps we can have a discussion at a different time, with regard to how we can perhaps bring this movie up Valley and have a presentation up here. It's just 30 minutes long, but I think it was very moving and also stimulated some really good conversation. To that end, I just wanted to, in terms of what we're doing here in Napa County, to sort of move ahead and do a better job, I've invited the council, and there's also copies for the public. We have been working together for the last year to, towards developing a family justice center here in Napa County. What a family justice center is, is basically a one-stop center for victims of family violence, sexual assault, domestic violence, child abuse, elder abuse. And the idea is, rather than having a victim have to chase around 10 or 12 different places to get services, whether it's counseling, help with housing, you know, legal assistance to report a crime, to get victim compensation, to get mental counseling, and a whole lot of other areas, the idea is to have one location where services are co-located, and where we bring the services to the victim, as opposed to the victim having to run around the county at a time in which they're most vulnerable. So we've, with the generosity of the Gasser Foundation, they've funded a feasibility study for Napa County towards developing the family justice center. It's a collaboration at the core right now between law enforcement, Napa Police Department, the Napa Sheriff's Office, Napa Emergency Women's Shelter, Mentis, Aldea for Children, Napa County Health and Human Services, Napa County Probation, and many others as we get the word out. So our consultants are coming to town on April 27 and 28, and we have a kickoff community forum at 8:30 in the morning at the Napa City Council Chambers on School Street in Napa, from about 8:30 to 10:00, to talk about what a family justice center is, the concept, the best practices that are happening around our state and our country in this regard, and answer folks' questions. Then they'll spend two days meeting a lot of our community partners, getting to know our community, and they'll come back again in July, and we'll have a community forum on the evening of July 20th. We'll get the news out sooner to you. And then we're going to have two days of strategic planning, and put that all together, and develop kind of a blueprint for what that would look like in our community, and then roll up our sleeves and make it happen. So I just wanted to let you know that was, Napa County is on the cutting edge of some new services. We also have $244,000 grant from the state of California through federal funding. It's a non-competitive grant to assist underserved communities with victim services. And there's a group that's mandated to meet to discuss how that's going to be spent. We've decided about $50,000 of that will be spent on a nine-passenger handicap-equipped van to assist victims from outlying communities such as St. Helena, Deer Park, Calistoga, who need to be brought to services down in Napa, and also potentially to bring a court clerk up from the county courts to help people who couldn't otherwise physically file papers to perhaps be able to file restraining orders and things. So that's something we're trying to look ahead to utilize, this funding that was brought down, and eventually that van will become part of our, part of the family justice center. So that's kind of an update I wanted to share with you, and it probably took more than a minute, but if I could give Yuka just a moment to tell you more about our victim services in the county.
Thank you so much for the recognition of the proclamation. The Victim Witness Assistance Program for Napa County is housed at the District Attorney's Office. We have four full-time victim witness advocates and myself. We also have a comfort dog that can come and give a calm comfort to crime victims, and we've worked very hard all year long. We served over 2,000 crime victims last year. I have some victims and survivors that have been assisted who live right here in St. Helena, and it's very devastating to go through that criminal justice process. So we do our best to inform them of their rights, how that case goes forward within the criminal justice system, but we are also available beyond the criminal, beyond the process, with referrals to community resources, to ears to hear when things are in crisis for them as a result of the crime. We are available at the DA's office, but we oftentimes go to the field, either home visit or field visit, and the people can call us at 299-1414, or the county website to get more information. Thank you so much once again for your recognition.
I just want to add one quick final word to the next proclamation, that this is shared with Napa Emergency Women's Shelter, because we share advocacy. They have the Sexual Assault Victim Services contract, so they assist victims of sexual assault, and we both assist victims of domestic violence, so we share this award with our collaborative partners from News.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Dorm?
That's yours.
Yeah, thank you. I'll leave that. Is it Ms. Dorm? Want to come on up? Then I'm going to read the proclamation, and we can say a few words too.
Thank you.
All right. Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2016. The month of April 2016 is Sexual Assault Awareness Month in California and throughout the United States. This year's campaign is dedicated to sexual violence prevention, requires many voices and roles, when consent is understood and respected, when individual support change, and everyone is involved. Prevention is possible, and it starts with you. Whereas, Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to spread knowledge that sexual violence is a widespread problem, but is preventable. Individuals, communities, and the private sector can all promote the building blocks of prevention, safety, respect, consent, and equality. There is no room for pressure, violence, or control. As individuals, we have a role to promote positive behavior, healthy relationships, and creating safe environments. And, whereas, prevention is possible when misconceptions are eliminated. To use our voice and share information with communities and organizations, we should serve as leaders in prevention by creating and strengthening safety policies, promoting respect, providing support for survivors, and ensuring they receive appropriate help and connection with resources. Businesses and corporations have an important role in sexual violence prevention by promoting healthy relationships with clients and consumers, promoting positive messages through marketing campaigns, and investing time and funds in programs and organizations working to end sexual violence. And, whereas, Sexual Assault Victim Services, a program of News, has promoted healthy sexuality and prevention of sexual assault for over 35 years, and also provides 24-hour crisis-line service to survivors and their significant others, offers education, responds to emergency calls, and offers support and comfort during forensic medical exams, all criminal proceedings. News Sexual Assault Victim Services requests public support throughout Napa County to create a future where women, men, and children can live free from violence and exploitation. With leadership and dedication, we can promote healthy sexuality and prevent sexual violence in the city of St. Helena and throughout Napa County. Together, we can all create change and speak out against harmful actions. Prevention is possible. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Alan Galbraith, mayor of the city of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in St. Helena, and I commend this observance to all citizens, dated April 12, 2016. Good. If you would wish to say a few words, and there's your proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for your support. Year after year, we come up here, and you have always been so generous with your time, and we truly appreciate it. Sexual assault is the rape crisis center for Napa County, and as such, we serve every sexual assault crime that happens, from Calistoga through American Canyon. Our numbers go up slightly every year, and of that number, almost 50% are under the age of 18. We hope that the 20%, which nationally feel there's only 20% sexual assault crimes are reported, that means that 80% go unreported, and we'd like to see that number change. But what I really want to talk to you about tonight is the statistic that one in five college women will be sexually assaulted before she graduates. And in that vein, we are going to be showing the film The Hunting Ground at the Napa Valley College, the 20th of April next week, at 7:00. It's free, it's really a wonderful film, it's a documentary that started out, I think, at the Film Festival in Park City a couple of years ago, and since then has gained a lot of momentum and much recognition, not in small part due to the fact that Lady Gaga's song is on the soundtrack, and it's a wonderful sound, and a powerful movie, and I encourage all of you to come, and if you have any high school students that are about looking for colleges, I highly recommend this film. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That takes us to our consent items.
Mayor Galbraith, the city attorney just pointed out that the discussion for potentially postponing or going dark for July is actually on the agenda, and so if council would like to have that discussion, you are free and able to do so.
I saw that as 5A, and wondered about it, so...
I apologize, that was, I misspoke.
No, no problem. No problem. So, what I understand, just to lead off here, is that, is that the city is saying, hey, should we take two meetings off in July? I know that Ms. Phillips will not be here, the 2nd July meeting, nor will I be here the 2nd July meeting. My suggestion would be not to take off now the 1st July meeting, think about taking off the 2nd July meeting, and thinking about taking off the 2nd August meeting, if that would work. Unless anybody else has other plans. The thought here was to get this discussed early on, so people would have a chance to make their plans around these dates.
Yeah, and historically, it was the last weekend in August because school was still out, but now since school starts so early, it makes more sense to do it earlier. I, it doesn't matter to me either way.
Well then, maybe I would suggest that we agree at this point that the 2nd meeting in July is off.
Okay.
We will reconnoiter later as to whether we need a meeting in, early in July, so it's not completely off the table, and that we will also think about taking the 2nd meeting in August off the table, if we can do it, but if we can't, we can't.
But I don't, I don't think it should be, I would rather still have the meeting off in December and in November, as opposed to having two in August, or...
Well, this is an addition.
This is an addition, or instead of?
No, this is an addition to.
Okay.
In addition to, yeah.
So the 26th, we're all saying is off, and we'll think about the 12th of July.
Correct.
Or maybe something in August.
Correct.
Yes.
Right now, we'll just go ahead and calendar that the July 26th meeting will be canceled. Is that the consensus?
I'm still stuck on the word reconnoiter, but I'm just kidding. I'm good.
Who said that?
I'm fine.
Okay, very good.
So that's the consensus, the council, that we're going to go ahead and cancel the meeting of July 26th?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, consent items. And again, with respect to consent items, we're going to read them off, and any member of the council or any member of the public can pull it, in which case we'll go through the normal process. Item 8, consideration and proposed approval of regular and special meeting minutes for various states as listed on the agenda. 9, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution requesting to purchase citywide access to safety data sheets through MSDS Online, and request a budget adjustment from fiscal year 2015-16, city manager general fund salary savings to non-departmental in an amount not to exceed $1,494. 10, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution awarding construction contract for mid- of regular and special meeting minutes for various dates as listed on the agenda. 9, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution requesting to purchase citywide access to safety data sheets through MSDS online and request a budget adjustment from fiscal year 2015-16. City manager general fund salary savings to non-departmental in an amount not to exceed $1,494. 10, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution awarding construction contract for Mitchell Drive sidewalk capital improvement project R-76 in the amount of $87,400 to AAA concrete construction and authorize the Director of Public Works to approve change orders not to exceed 15% of the contract amount. 11, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution awarding construction contract for 2015 pavement rehabilitation project, capital improvement project R-74 in the amount of $124,920 to American Asphalt Repair and Resurfacing Company and authorize the Director of Public Works to approve change orders not to exceed 10% of the contract amount. 12, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving out-of-state travel for wastewater treatment operator 2, Jarrett Rosini, to attend the California Rural Water Association Conference in South Lake Tahoe, Nevada, April 25 through 28, 2016 in an amount not to exceed $1,300. 13, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a joint powers agreement between the city of Napa and participating cities in the county of Napa for the purpose of dispersing California Board of State and Community Corrections Police Grant Funds amongst the parties and accept $9,504 in grant funds. 14, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving an agreement with NIGRO and NIGRO to provide a forensic accounting audit of the comprehensive flood control project for a total not to exceed amount of $60,000. 15, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving S.H.E.S/SH.P.S. parent-teacher group to host musical entertainment and vendors at Lyman Park on Friday, May 6, 2016 between the hours of 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM and waive the encroachment permit fee in the amount of $200 and authorizing city staff to set up and tear down equipment.
I have just one question on 14.
One question on 14, all right. Let's have the question on 14, and then we'll see whether we can move approval of the consent.
I just was curious. I didn't see it in the staff report. The range of the responses we got for these services in terms of cost?
The cost range, I think at the low end, and Tracy can correct me if I'm incorrect on this, was $45,000 on up to about $215,000.
Okay.
On the high end.
So, what we're accepting here is at the lower end?
It's at the lower end.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve consent items 8 through 16.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
Ms. Black?
Councilwoman Doring?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. That takes us to new business. Item 16, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving the St. Helena Chamber of Commerce to host musical entertainment, mobile food truck, and mobile food truck, excuse me, and vendors at Lyman Park on the 2nd and 4th Thursdays of June, July, and August of 2016 between the hours of 5:30 PM and 8:00 PM and waive the encroachment permit fee in the amount of $200 and authorize city staff time for setup and teardown of equipment. And Mr. Palmer, this is with you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Right, as you stated in the title, the item here, the Chamber of Commerce has requested permission to host the musical entertainment vendors... Got to crack my mic. Is that any better? That's better, okay. I'm not going to take the broken chair that Noah has. I'll use my own. But yeah, the Chamber of Commerce is requesting permission to host musical entertainment vendors in Lyman Park, which is locally known as musical picnics. They've also requested the city waive fees for the events and allow a mobile food vendor on Main Street during the event. We're here asking council approval on these items tonight because the current code doesn't include provisions for any of these items. It doesn't allow staff to reserve the park, allow mobile food vendors, or waive fees. And for the first item, reserving the park, since the city doesn't have a permit process for reserving the entire park, we're requiring the chamber to submit an encroachment permit along with the required insurance. As I said before, they're also asking us to waive the fees, the amount of $200 for the encroachment permit and the gazebo permit fee of $35 per event totaling $200 for the gazebo. So, the grand total of $410. And then, they're also asking to have the mobile food vendor on Main Street in the two parking spaces there adjacent to the park. Staff's recommendation to them was that the food vendor be allowed on Railroad Avenue and not Main Street as a preferred alternative for pedestrian access, considering vehicle traffic on Main Street of, you know, 1,000 peak hour trips and 11,000, 12,000 trips a day. Staff just felt that the railroad location was superior in terms of providing a more conducive pedestrian environment. The council wishes it can approve the use of the parking spaces on Main Street. As I note in the staff report, it's important to note that Main Street right-of-way is owned by Caltrans. And the city is only responsible there is for parking enforcement. So, we do have those two stalls, do have certain hours that are regulated, and that is done by the city. But otherwise, that is Caltrans right-of-way and subject to whatever encroachment permit requirements they have. I think that is all that I have to sum things up. The tax resolution does allow the use of the park, subject to an encroachment permit, allow the mobile food vendor, and waiving the encroachment permit and gazebo fees, and authorize staff to assist with setup and tearing of the equipment. At this point, we don't anticipate as much. I think the chamber has indicated they didn't need any help. But based on past experience, staff does spend a couple hours over there helping out. That's it.
Any preliminary questions of staff? I have one. In terms of the encroachment permit, that's a permit that would be issued by Caltrans and not by the city?
So, there's two. We're having them fill out one for the use of the park because there isn't a current... There isn't a mechanism for a park permit for Lyman Park. So, there's one from the city for Lyman Park, and then there's one for Caltrans for the food trucks.
I guess I have another question too, which is the item before this, the public school event in the park. Are you requiring the public school also to get insurance and everything? Because events seem very, very similar to me, with the possible exception of the food truck on Main Street versus Railroad. So, I think we should need to treat every nonprofit in our town equitably. And so, if you're going to require the chamber to do it, I think you have to require the school district to do it as well because there's a similar type of permit.
You're absolutely correct. We are requiring the parent-teacher group to get an encroachment permit, to use the park.
Oh, I know about the...
Yeah.
And we just waived that.
Right.
But you mentioned some sort of insurance requirement for the chamber. And I was wondering if that applied for the school district?
It does, yeah. It's part of the... So, the encroachment permit would be just like any other encroachment permit for both, the chamber and...
No, it's not an additional on top of the encroachment permit.
No, it goes along with the encroachment. It's a condition of the encroachment permit to have insurance, naming the city's additional assured. And the permit specifies what those limits are.
And so, go ahead.
I have a question, which is, do other cities do this differently? So, it's not so challenging and difficult for things that happen every year pretty consistently? And is that something we should look into for a future?
I think that'd be a great thing that we could look into and bring back.
Okay.
Especially dealing with the parks.
Well, we've been doing this every year.
Right.
Right.
So, it's never been such an issue.
We always approve it. If there's a way to streamline it, to make it easier, I think that would save staff time. Well, that's the discussion now.
We can do that.
I have one more technical question. And that is that, am I right, based upon the proposed resolution, that we would not issue the waiver with respect to the parking spots or whatever it is that they're seeking here, unless and until they've presented us with a Caltrans encroachment permit?
I have to reread the resolution to see how it's written.
It looks like number 6.
I think maybe you should open it for public comment.
Yeah, I will in just a minute. I just want to make sure we understand the technical.
The way it reads, right, "Two spaces on Main Street reserved for the mobile food vendor between 3:00 and 8:00 PM in the days of musical picnic, upon the chamber receiving an encroachment permit from a Caltrans." So, it is contingent upon them receiving a permit.
And they would have to demonstrate to the city that they've received the permit from Caltrans?
If such a permit is required.
Well, that's the question. Let's come back to it. Let me open the public hearing. I'll come back to that in a minute.
Good evening. Pam Simpson, St. Helena Chamber. I'll just turn that this way. Thanks for the opportunity for letting me talk about musical picnics because usually, it's on consent, and I don't have to ever really discuss it. But this is the chamber's 28th year of doing musical picnics. And it's something that we're very proud of. And it's one of our quintessential St. Helena events. It's very much about community. And it's one of those events that the chamber is thrilled to put on because it really does bring out the best of St. Helena. It's our community that show up. A lot of you attend. We have great bands. And really is a nice event. We do six of them, as you know, in June, July, and August, every other, every 2nd and 4th Thursday. And the lineup this year is going to be fantastic. We have all-new bands, and we have sourced them from Porch Fest and Bottle Rock. I have my staffer here tonight, Susan Durier, who puts these bands together and puts the entire event together. And, you know, we feel like this is truly a community event. It's very organic. It's very low-impact. There's no fluff. And in my opinion, the nights are just magical. The kids are dancing. We have great images from it that really, really speak to who, what, to what St. Helena is. And I always keep in mind the late Mayor Britton's comment to me when I first started with the chamber, which was, you know, for musical picnics, don't fix it. There's nothing broken. Let's keep going with it. So, we try not to fix it. And that's why we're just asking for what we've always done in the past, which is, we've had the food trucks now for three years. And we have, you know, the bands. And it's just a great event. The chamber breaks even on these events. And we've got great sponsors who contribute to these events in order to make this happen. And so, there is no cost. It's always been free. And those sponsors this year are St. Helena Hospital and Castellucci Napa Valley, which has a new wine brand in St. Helena. We're thrilled to have them onboard. And we have six wine sponsors. So, great opportunity for me to sort of pitch the musical picnics. So, we invite you all out this year. Two items in the staff report I just wanted to talk about. We have never asked for staff and never needed staff, city staff, to be involved. This is something that our staff comes out and picks and sets up and breaks down. And we usually get a key for the gazebo, and that's it. So, other than, you know, the regular routine through the picking up the park the next day, we don't really require any city staff to be involved at all. As far as Caltrans is concerned, you know, when I read the staff report, quickly just emailed Caltrans. Luckily, I've got somewhat of a, you know, after four years of working with Caltrans on the Highway 29, I've got a couple contacts there. And was able to get a... I'll pass this around. A response to the encroachment permit. Basically, I explained what musical picnics was and explained the situation. And their response is that the encroachment permit from Caltrans is only necessary when a scheduled event requires a lane closure, shoulder closure, or in some cases, it occupies a public space such as a vista. And while Lyman Park is beautiful, I doubt it's a Caltrans vista. So, based on the description, they don't see any need for an encroachment permit via Caltrans. So, this is officially from the permit department at Caltrans. And so, we're just hoping that you continue the tradition and let us continue with musical picnics as we always have.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Hi, my name is Bobby Monnet, and I'm speaking as a resident citizen. And I really think this is a wonderful, a wonderful event. And, but I do want to say, based on experience, that I'm hoping that the event will show respect to those who aren't interested in going and not have the volume of the bands as high as they have been in the past. I don't say this only in terms of people who are across town, who are impacted by this. But the people who are there, there are decibels. And OSHA has set standards for the, what's safe for people to have amplified when they're at a musical gathering. And in the past, because of the distance that the sound travels, I would suggest, and I've gone to in it, you know, I would suggest that for that reason especially, the volume of the bands is monitored so that it's not excessive and for public safety as well as noise nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further public comment? Well, let me close the public comment and open it for discussion.
I'll start. I sort of view this, while the chamber throws it, I really view it as a community event and always have. And like I said earlier, if there's a way to streamline this such that it can be done business as usual and not have to go for an encroachment permit and even have us, like, talking about it, I think that would be a smart move for everyone's sake. Obviously, it's a slippery slope because if we do it for one group, then others might want to start doing it. But I think we've dealt with this before where there are repeat events that happen annually every year. We've said that's, maybe we can look at that. And ultimately, being more efficient, saving staff time, saving everyone's resources is a smart move. And we can probably avoid setting precedent in that slippery slope issue. And I'm getting good nods from Noah, so hopefully, this all makes sense. Based on this, it looks like we don't need the encroachment permit. Probably smart to have staff just sort of confirm that. But, you know, if we don't need it, we don't need it. And I would say, let's move forward without requiring the encroachment permit from Caltrans.
I agree with Greg. I think this is... I love the musical picnics. I try to go to as many as I can. I have loved the addition of the food trucks, frankly, because even though I always have this sort of romantic notion of putting together a picnic, I'm usually scrambling to get there by 6:00. And so, it's great and festive and fun to have the addition of the food trucks. It's only from 6:00 to 8:00. And frankly, by that time, there's really not a lot of traffic on Main Street going through town. So, I would heartily endorse waiving the permits and supporting the chamber's plan for the summer.
Ms. Doring?
You know, I agree with everything that's been said so far. For me, it's just a matter of a public safety issue, and I really haven't heard a lot about what the issue exactly is. I guess I might have questions for Pam in terms of where the food trucks have been in the past, what the history, have there been issues in the past? You did mention that there were food trucks in the past. I know there have been. I don't recall where they were and if there've been any incidents. I think we need to explore that a little bit more. Everything else, I agree with wholeheartedly. I just want to focus in on that.
Sure.
Let me reopen the public hearing?
No, thank you. The food trucks have been on Main Street. But I totally understand that in, you know, the last couple of years, we've had them. There hasn't been a process for making sure that the food trucks are legal and fine on Main Street. And so, therefore, you know, this year, when the city requested that we ask Caltrans, we did it. And so, they have been on Main Street in the past, and there haven't been any incidences and any public safety. I don't think there's been any reports of anything to the police.
Frankly, the public safety is during the day crossing to the post office. If you... That's when you see a lot of public safety issues.
Yeah, all right.
One of the statements you make in your letter to the Caltrans is that the food truck would not hinder sidewalk activity in any way. How did you come to that conclusion? What is going on there?
Well, while I would love that we had so many people, you know, blocking the sidewalk with all these people lining up for the food trucks, it just doesn't happen. There's about 150 people who come to musical picnics, and they mostly bring their food. But like Councilmember Kroll says, there's some people who just can't. And so, there's usually two or three people standing on the sidewalk. This is really a low-impact, really nice event. And it just isn't crowds, and it just isn't... There just really isn't an issue.
What's the downside or is it a comparison in terms of Main Street versus Railroad? Walk me through that analysis.
Yeah, those food trucks are business. And therefore, in order for them to come up to St. Helena, they sort of need to be guaranteed a certain number of, a certain amount of money. And therefore, if they move to Railroad... If you've ever been to musical picnics, you know most of the people sit on this side, the west side of Lyman Park, and nobody is really over on the east side. So, therefore, you put the truck over there, there's not going to be any business. And we actually did have quite a few people last year who were passerbyers, who saw the food truck, who stopped in, who bought something, and then walked over and sat in the park. And it really did transition visitors from, you know, just walking down the street and saying, what's going on here, to actually buying some food and coming in. to, to actually buying some food and coming in. They see the event and kind of go, this is really a cool, small-town thing. And we'd really like to, to experience that. And so having them on Main Street actually brought in a few people.
I understand that. That makes sense. And then I just-
Let me close the public-
Yeah, I just want to know-
Thank you.
Thank you.
What the concerns of the city are. I think we need to be very diligent in making sure that we obviously provide public safety and not make it more dangerous there. And I'm trying to weigh both sides of this issue.
Right, exactly. So Pam is correct in that I, I don't have any police reports related to any accidents that happened with pedestrians out there. And, and what we have though is reports from the staff of last year's event of pedestrians, you know, potentially being unsafe or, I almost say unsafe, but, you know, kind of a risk, more risky situation. There's people running across the street. And I, I know there's some people do that now, but by adding a food truck, we're adding, we're changing the conditions. I mean, that's something that's existing. People have existing patterns. We're adding something else there that's an attraction that's going to draw people into that area. So that's staff's concern, is there were some things observed last year that are potentially risky and we just felt like Railroad would be a, a better location to provide pedestrian access.
Let me ask a, maybe a far-out question. I can see your concern, which is that people coming south on Main Street see the food truck. They drop people off by the post office and then they charge across the street to the food truck. That's what, that's the scenario. Is there any way during the hours that the food truck are there to put, to put those, what do you call them, those, what's the word? Cones or, not cones, but those, you know, what you would put a table on that, that you see in the city. I'm not coming up with a word, but they're triangular?
Sawhorses.
Sawhorses, yeah.
Like, like a barricade of some kind?
Did you go to any picnics last year?
I, I did, yes.
I mean, I, I went to at least four. I didn't see a single problem. Or I think we're creating a problem that doesn't exist. I mean, we don't even enforce the bicycle safety helmet in this town. And now we're worried about people, like, being so, so excited about a food truck that they're going to run across Main Street.
Apparently, that's what the Public Works Director-
I'm going to play devil's advocate for a second, though. There's no way you can prove to me that someone wouldn't stop for the wonderful music and park by the post office and run across the street any more than they might for the food truck. So how do you break down that it's the food truck that sort of encouraged this irrational behavior versus the music?
I mean, it's, this is ridiculous, in my opinion.
Well, I, I think our, our staff has raised a legitimate issue of public safety. And to suggest that it's a ridiculous issue is, is not appropriate. I think it's a, it's a public safety issue. And we, as a city, have a fiduciary duty to our citizens to ensure that we do not create risk for the city financially or safety-wise. So I think it's worthy to, to explore it. Just because it's not happened, thank God, doesn't mean it couldn't happen.
I guess I don't see it as a significant public safety.
Do you know where the workhorses go? Are they sawhorses?
Well, I was thinking on the sidewalk by the post office. Just line them up there so that people that are on that sidewalk can't just jump across it.
I mean, if we were truly worried about a public safety, we would have somebody out there. I mean, seriously, all day long, people are jaywalking to get to the post office. That's a much more serious risk than, than it's six o'clock on a Thursday night when the traffic has subsided or at eight o'clock. I mean, this is just like, to me, bureaucracy gone crazy, frankly.
I move to, well, I, I, I don't, I don't want to say it's crazy. It's always good to talk about things and make sure we've got all our bases covered. And I appreciate Councilmember Doring bringing it up. My, my sense is that we might, I think we've, we've exhausted the discussion here. And, and, and look, I don't, I think the, the, the daily conditions, to say that it's necessarily any more safe or unsafe than the daily conditions, I just see that as a, as a stretch. And I don't know that one could prove that or disprove it. And so I, I'd say let's, let's move forward with, 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 I guess, what are we, what are we saying here?
Well, let's see, the Public Works Director has been working on-
I just want to add one more thing and just reiterate that, you know, the, the fact that the city is taking action on it is the action that creates more risk and liability. And that's, that's it. People running across the street now, the city has done nothing to, to encourage that either. By taking action on this and approving the food truck, you, you are saying, this is okay with us. And that, that's where the change is different. That's why there's a risk and that's why it's here before you and why I flagged this as an issue I wanted to bring to council. The second part of it is that the Chamber of Commerce isn't the only event in town that's going to want a food truck on Main Street. And so I think you talked before about, someone in the council here talked before about setting precedent for future events. And that's exactly what's going to happen with this, is there are other people in the community that want to have events at Lyman Park and want to have the food trucks. And so there'll be more that we're bringing forward to you now that, you know, with, with Main Street as, as the recommended alternative or as one of the alternatives that's allowable. So that's, that's the reason and that's, that's the things to consider here.
But even Caltrans doesn't see any issue here. Why, 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 if Caltrans has said, hey, this is-
Well, I think what you have is an email from an encroachment permit processor, I didn't look at his title specifically, but who's, who's reading his, the 100-page manual that was, includes additional items and saying, "Look, I don't see a traffic control plan necessary here, so I don't think you need a permit." And, you know-
Well, I just would be curious to know what the nature of the, you mentioned that some people, someone on the staff had witnessed some potentially dangerous behavior or something like that. And I guess I would be curious to know who witnessed that and what they witnessed. Because I went to, I've been to these concerts all the time. I've never seen anything of that nature. And, and, and frankly, I'm surprised by it. So I, I just, it just seems like it's a food truck. You know, it's, it's not, we're not talking about a, a DJ out there, like, attracting people from all around. It's a food truck. It's, it's really, you know, we can't stop people from doing stupid things like jaywalking. I mean, I guess we could, we, the police department's right there. If we were seriously, seriously worried about it, we could start issuing jaywalking tickets like we do for speeding tickets on certain streets and people wouldn't do it anymore. But we have never taken that step either. So I just think this is, this is a great event and it's really just sad that we've wasted so many resources discussing it.
The city raised, raised an issue and was incumbent on us to discuss it. And certainly, obviously, the city is concerned because it is, does involve city action. That, that's the real distinction. And it's setting, it may well set a precedent for other food trucks on Main Street, which may not be wise. That's the problem.
But every event is different.
Does our, our encroachment permit to use the park, right? And then it would also include parking in these spaces, right? Is that what we're saying here?
The encroachment permit would, yeah, we would expand it to uncover-
The spaces. Caltrans isn't-
We do control the spaces.
So no, so it's, no, the encroachment is not for the spaces. The encroachment is just for the park. And then the action related to the spaces is just because we enforce the parking to allow them to park illegally essentially.
So I'm just, the question I wanted to raise, and maybe this works and maybe it doesn't, but we're also requiring proof of insurance, right? So if something happened, isn't there insurance that's being provided by the Chamber such that that's the first line of defense and that the city isn't involved? I'm just seeing if that's a solution so we can move on. I don't know how we're going to streamline this.
The insurance, the insurance is required, as stated, and staff is working to streamline this process. And so that's part of the issue is, is there is no process created currently. Staff saw it as a potential concern, brought it to council for discussion and action to allow staff to move forward with the process that does not currently exist. However, we are committed to trying to streamline this process for nonprofit organizations like the Chamber and the Parent Teacher Group who is wanting to rent the space, et cetera. And I, well, I don't want to commit. City Manager Phillips, I am very close to certain that that process will be done by the next summer event.
And I think, I think the question that Mr. Pitts was asking was whether the scope of coverage of the insurance would include anybody that was injured, for example, crossing Main Street, going to the food truck in connection with the event.
Who's going to cover that?
I think that the idea is, sure, it's covered, but to what extent? Is the dollar value enough to cover the potential problem? I mean, that's, that's the concern.
That's true with any injury that could happen in the park. So, so I think the answer is yes. There's like a, there's an insurance policy and coverage there that hopefully addresses the concerns here so we can-
All right. Let's see how a vote goes.
I was actually going to lend a little calm to this. The city also is covered, you know, generally under its own insurance pool. And the city also has a variety of different possibly applicable state law immunities that would protect the city from liability in association with granting this approval. I haven't been tasked with undertaking to see whether those immunities would apply here, but my understanding is that they probably would, which would give another layer of protection for this event.
I move approval of the Chamber's request.
Second?
All right.
Subject to modifying condition six, which requires the encroachment permit from Caltrans?
Well, no, because it turns out Caltrans doesn't require an encroachment permit.
No, but the, I think the, the proper motion though would, would be deleting that requirement six.
Yeah.
I would just add the words, if required.
Except for that we know it's not, so-
Well, the city's going to confirm that.
I'm not sure if this is a formal disposition of that or not. I, I don't know if it is or not.
The city said it was going to double-check with Caltrans.
The recommended action doesn't even have the Caltrans encroachment permit listed here. It's just the city encroachment permit. Oh, no, it does say the Chamber will also need to obtain an encroachment permit from-
Yeah, just add, if, if required. That solves that. Okay, with that modification, roll call. Ms. Black?
I'm sorry, who made the second?
I did.
I have you, that you moved.
I moved.
She moved.
Oh, you moved, okay. Councilmember Crowell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Okay, that takes us to item 17, setting fees for special events, Harvest Festival and Fourth of July fireworks. And it looks like Ms. Arias, you're on.
I'm on.
Are there any encroachment permits?
That's next, Council. As you guys know, last year, Council directed the city staff to become the main facilitator and organizer of both events, the Fourth of July and the hometown Harvest Festival. As you know, the fireworks that were held at Crane Park, the baseball field was open for all citizens free of charge. And the bocce courts and tennis courts were also rented to help with the fundraising efforts. Our goal was to raise $45,000, but with the, with our Park and Rec. Commissioner, Kim Feeney, leading the campaign, we were able to raise $65,000. And so now there's currently $20,300 available for this year's show. It's very exciting. With the Harvest Festival, last year's staff, we initiated planning with meeting the nonprofits. The city and the nonprofits both agreed that all nonprofits taking tickets for the food and games would take in the 10% of the day's earnings to, to cover city direct cost. And there was also a maximum fee capped at $150 per nonprofit. Also, with some fees with the pet parade, years passed that were set by per person and not for pets. But the commissioners, park and rec. commissioners felt that the fee needed to be per pet, so it can be more equitable fee. Last year, we had 50 pets in the pet parade. So during our Park and Rec. Commission meeting in January, the commission, you know, discussed in length the Fourth of July and the Harvest Festival. And then, so, and to develop the following recommendations for the fees. With regards to the fireworks, the commission is recommending that we rent the bocce court and the tennis court. $350 for each bocce court and $750 for each tennis court. This estimated cost would be about $6,500 and will help cover the event. Some of the events cost were the security, restrooms, advertising, banners, cleaning services for the vineyard next door and also for our park and supplies. And also a lot of, the supplies were a lot of the netting, the orange netting, so we can close off the majority of the park. So it's about $6,000. With the Harvest Festival, this year, so with the nonprofit, I mean, the commission recommended that we charge, so this last month in March, we held another meeting with the nonprofits to get some feedback regarding two, my, two of my major concerns, issues from last year, was eliminating the tickets for the food and also setting the fee for the nonprofits. The commission recommended to, to, to talk about these two things. And the nonprofits both supported the idea for eliminating all the tickets for purchasing food, thereby requiring that all nonprofits be responsible for their own, managing their own sales. The also, the commission also recommended that the flat fee would be $150 for the food vendors. During our non-meeting, the nonprofits agreed and would like to have the set fee at a $125 for the parking spaces. I took that back to the February meeting to the Park and Rec. Commission and they both agreed that, all of them agreed that $125 was a fair price for the food vending. It was very, and that would bring, there's 14 total available spots for the, inside the city parking lot. And so total result would be about $1,700. With the pet fees, we were recommending a slightly changed fees from this year. We recommend that we set a fee for $15 pre-registration and a $20 charge for the day of entries. We're encouraging people to do a pre-registration, online registration. All revenues generated through this fee will be used to help fund much needed improvements at our Waffle Park. Kind of some of the Harvest Festival expenses, again, restroom, advertising, bands, trash, supply, security, are about $7,600. So our goal is to cover our costs. We're recommending that we are, the staff is recommending that we set these fees for each of the special events. Do you guys have any questions?
So in the paragraph about the, the profit vendors at 150 per space, the 10 by 10, that generates 6,300? Not in revenue from the people selling stuff, but for the city, right?
Yes.
To offset the costs?
Yes.
And then plus the-
Plus the $1,700.
The $1,750 gets us to-
Eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay. And then, I wasn't clear on the rental. We're talking about renting the bocce courts and tennis courts to individuals and/or groups that want to rent them out for viewing pads, right? Okay.
Any other preliminary questions?
And that would cover the, our city cost.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if that covers the cost, and then it doesn't cover the cost of the-
Staffing.
The fireworks.
No, $40,000 is still set.
Right.
But so like last year, we, it was 45 because all we really had was security and some supplies. But security is a little up, but we didn't have, we need to, we didn't have bathrooms. We needed some more supplies. We need to, you know, make sure more of the cleaning is getting done in the vineyard and the school. So these are things that we discovered this year and so we really wanted to make sure that we cover those costs and make sure we did it properly.
I think you're missing a line item for garbage pickup on the, on the Fourth of July.
On both, yeah, the garbage.
No, it's on the, it's on the Harvest Festival.
Oh, not in the Fourth of July, yeah. It was a lot of work for both events, a lot more than we anticipated. And we wanted to continue to be a success, so this is why we're recommending these fees. And I really valued the time that the Park and Recreation Commission took in discussing this. We want, they, they both, all of them, you know, really participated in, either in fundraising for the fireworks but also in helping out in the Harvest Festival with the pet parade and with the nonprofits. All of them had key roles, so I really appreciate their help.
All right, any further?
I'm just curious.
Preliminary questions?
What is the relationship between the fee charged for the, the pet parade and, and any costs associated with that? What is that, I'm not sure what the basis of the, of the money is for the, the charge. Just an entry fee type of thing or?
Entry fee, yeah, making sure everyone's in line. There's some costs. I mean, we get a lot of donations for prizes and stuff, but in the past, all the fees were given to a nonprofit, either We Care or another one. And the commission thought that we really, our Waffle Park, Dock Park, needs some love. We don't have funds right now that, you know, really take care of that park. So we thought that, you know, with our pet parade, we should definitely look for some things to be able to do in that park.
I would, I would, I don't know how we're going to vote on this. I assume we'll, I guess my point would just be to make sure that we spend a lot of time educating our participants so that they know that that money is going to a good use like that.
Oh, yeah, and our-
Because there's an impression that, there could be an impression that the city is nickel and diming, you know, for 15 bucks when, when, but you'd be telling, oh, no, we have,
Well, we have lots of projects, yeah.
Designated for this, this use and everybody who participates understands that, I think.
Absolutely.
That will be important.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I've done it like five times and never even thought about it.
There's always been a fee to participate.
Yeah.
Let me, let me open it up for public comment.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, sure.
The, how'd we come up with a $3.50 versus $7.50 for the bocce courts versus tennis? Is it just based on size? Is one more front row than the other?
Yeah, the bocce courts averages about 20 people that fit, but the tennis- Yeah, the bocce courts averages about twenty people that fit, but the tennis court is about seventy-five to a hundred people that can fit. So, large parties, I mean, there are no five to six families with friends can come, and it's just about the space. And there's only, we only do five of the spaces of tennis courts because that, one with the board is really covered by trees.
Okay.
So, kind of eliminate one, but the five, it went really well.
Cool.
All right, let me open it up for public comment. Any public comment? Ms. Kissner?
Mr. Mayor, city council people, my name is Grace Kissner. I'm here as a private citizen and as the, as one of the chairman of the, one of the nonprofits in town. And I think that we would like to, I would like to object to charging the nonprofits a fee. And I'm going to read most of this because it'll be much faster than if I try and do it alone. The meeting where the decision was made was poorly attended, according to your own staff reports. There needed to be input from all the nonprofits, not just a few. I think there were five people there. Speaking for myself and my organization, we had no idea what was on the agenda, and I was unable to attend because I was required to be at a planning commission that night. And so we sent the previous year's chairman, who is new in town, and, but she did represent us. The Harvest Festival, as far as I'm concerned, I think she, one of the council people, myself and Monica Miller, ran the Harvest Festival several years. And then Pam and Susan helped us one year, and then I think the last year before it was turned over to the city, they ran it. And we ran it with all volunteers, and I'm, I'm going to say this, the Harvest Festival was never intended to be a fundraiser for the city of St. Helena. It was meant to provide an annual get-together for this community. The purpose, from a financial standpoint, was to raise money to build a community center, and I know that's very, that's a bone of contention right now. And to provide local nonprofits with an opportunity to raise funds. The Harvest Festival is a St. Helena tradition at its best. No individuals are profiting from the money received in these nonprofit food booths, and there is a great deal of hard work that goes into providing that food. As a matter of fact, the nonprofits that participate in selling the food turn around and donate the money to make other organizations that directly benefit from the, for the citizens of this town. Some example, some examples are the Kiwanis Club paying for and building the covered picnic area in Crane Park. I know they've done a lot right out here for the school district. Last week, I attended a Sir Optimus Club bingo game in which Bonnie Shock, their president, presented a check for twenty-six hundred dollars to Norma Faries to donate to the family center. My club, the Federated Women, contributes scholarships to local high school students. News, what you just heard about from Gary Lieberstein, for Voices, the Rianda Senior Center, and we partner with the Children's Librarian for Reading as the fun program. I'll be finished in just a second. Leslie Stanton reads to the children at Hunts Grove, Stonebridge, and the Boys and Girls Club. We do this once a month. We are now going to start doing it in Calistoga with the new nonprofit, or the low-cost income up there. And when the Boys and Girls Club is up there, we're also going to do up there. Once Leslie is through with reading, every one of the children is allowed to select a book to take home, which has been purchased by the Federated Women. That's the club, and that's why we raise money. That's one of the reasons. Often, it is the first book some of these kids have ever had, or much less owned. I would like to suggest that the city treat all nonprofits organization in our cities equally. And I'm talking about the previous two items that you approved, fifteen and sixteen, waiving fees and staff hours for the items on the agenda. I'm asking that you do not ask the nonprofits for money for boosts at the, at the Harvest Festival. I will say that one of the reasons they could, they could save money is we never put a, when we were running the Harvest Festival, we didn't put a banner across Main Street and have to pay a thousand dollars for that. And that almost makes up what they're looking for right now in savings. And I think we can find savings other than, than, what, I don't know what Paul said, nickel and dime the nonprofits to death, maybe? Anyway, I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Ms. Finney?
Hi, my name is Kim Finney. I'm a private citizen as well, twenty years I've lived here. I'm also on the park and rec. commission. I helped raise money for the fireworks last year. I rented out the bocce ball courts and the tennis courts for a fee. Every single person would like to rent it again this year for the new fee price, so those are covered. In regards to the Harvest Festival, when I joined Parks and Recs, I didn't sign up to do the Harvest Festival. And when the Chamber of Commerce came that January to our group to say, we're done with it, five eager people said, we'll take it, because we knew it was going to go away. And as far as traditions are concerned in our community, the Harvest Festival is one of them. I appreciate all the time and effort everyone put in for twenty years prior too, but no one was there last year to put it on. I sponsored about half of it with private funds just to make sure that it happened. My suggestion to nonprofits last year was, this is a great community of people who are willing to give, find a sponsor to sponsor your table. A winery, a business, a hardware store, a restaurant. Pay the hundred and fifty, hundred and twenty-five dollar fee, you get two people benefiting from one table. Last year was, from what we hear, the largest attended and most profitable Harvest Festival. Who's going to pay for it? We need garbage picked up, we need overtime for staffing, picnic tables delivered. We do need signage because we need people there. I think it's a sense of community when people go to events like that, and until it's sustainable, because we don't have sponsors as a city or an organization putting it on, someone has to pay. My suggestion again, Federated Women, everyone else, and there is a waiting list for the fourteen spots after the fact. A lot of nonprofits want to participate. I'll help you find someone to pay your fee. That's what I do, and I can connect you with many people in this town. I think it is about a sense of community. I wish we did have the fees to pay for it as a city. Again, hopefully in the future we will. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Finney.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Sure. Let me close the public hearing. Go ahead.
We did, we did reach out to all the nonprofits. We constantly reminded them about the meeting, about the meeting in March. My assistant, Amalia, reached out constantly and called everybody, talked about it. Those that were attended represented a good chunk of the, you know, not everybody showed up, but a lot of well-spoken people came and talked. And they were all understood how much work that was put in by Amalia and I. So two people for six months worked really hard with every single nonprofit, consecrating them to have insurance, everything in place the day of. So we definitely work with everybody. And after the meeting too, we reached out to some of the other ones, nonprofits as well, that contacted us back, and they were all well-received. So we have not had one, other than the Federated Women, that were opposed to it, but all the other nonprofits were okay with that.
Okay. All right, let me close the hearing and invite further council discussion. No, we just allow once. That's it. Thank you.
I have a, I actually have one other question. With, with the, and I think the, the ticket system has been cumbersome because it's another level of accounting, and people have got to get the tickets right, and they wait to get their, the nonprofit money from the tickets.
It was a lot of work.
Yeah.
I mean, it took me a week to count.
It seems like a real smart move to get rid of that, right?
Yeah.
But did the, did the city ever take a percentage of the sales in the past? So, so it wasn't like they weren't paying something in the past?
Yeah.
Like if, if I'm, like I'm part of a, if you sold three thousand dollars, the city kept some portion of that?
Yes.
Those proceeds, how much was that?
Well, no, so before, when it was the, the committee, the Harvest Festival committee took twenty percent.
Twenty percent?
Of the gross.
Of the pro, of the gross.
Of each nonprofit?
Yes.
Gross sales.
And then, then the four years that Monica Miller and the chamber took over it, they didn't. But they, and they also paid their staff to do it. So Monica was paid to run the Harvest Festival, and the chamber also paid their staff to run the festival too. For us to bring it back, and, and we saw a couple of comparisons, those four years, gross was low. You know, wasn't as high as it was previous years. That's why some of the main things to have advertisement, to have bands, you know, things that do cost money. The children's area and all that kind of stuff that takes a large deposit to have as, as well, for that, some of the things do cost money. And so we felt, as the commission felt, that it was reasonable for a hundred and twenty-five dollars to help, and then whatever's left over is seed money for the next year. We want this to be sustainable, to keep going and make it even better each year.
So I, I have a question that I just thought of. So what if, what if one of the nonprofits, and what I'm speaking, thinking of specifically is the Boy Scouts, need more than two parking spaces? So for example, the Boy Scouts always put up that elaborate...
They paid for another one.
They get a, they get a third. They, they, there's the option for them to do that, or, or we're just super tight on space?
Last year, there was, there was space, and so we gave it, they had the space, and so also the Catholic school also wanted additional space, and so in that time, we were able to give it to them.
So they pay half of the one-twenty-five for one more space?
Yes.
Right?
No, no, for another two spaces.
Oh, they get four?
They got four.
And then, another question, while, while we've got you, have the profit vendors ever, they've paid in the past, obviously, right?
And a hundred and fifties are highest ever they paid, and that was set by the chamber, and I kept it that way.
Okay, well, and historically, has anyone ever pushed back or complained, or is it...
They think it's high as well.
The for-profit folks?
Yes.
And how does, I was just going to ask, how does it compare to like a stall at the farmer's market, like in Calistoga or here, or is there even a charge for that?
I tried asking Ed that, he never gave me an answer.
Okay.
Okay.
So I, yeah, I've asked that question too, but...
Because we don't want to lose interesting vendors, but I was going to say, maybe we increase their price, right, to put relief on the side of the for-profit?
They won't come, yeah.
But if we lose them, then all of a sudden, you've got a empty Harvest Festival.
We had a hard time getting vendors, you know, to come back. And so we're, then we've, we've had, talked to a lot of the vendors and the, they're already coming in. We already have about fifteen applications already, and we're, we're on a roll. We want to get done with all the applications, all that stuff before summer. So then we can really work on it in summer and not, you know, weeks beforehand that we had to do it last year. So that's why it's really important to set these fees, so my staff and I can get working and get everything ready, because I'm on my own this summer. My staff is out on maternity leave, so I really need to get going with the staff.
So here's a question. I mean, I did the math, it would, it would be like an extra thirty-five dollars per, I think there's forty-two vendors based on this math, for-profit vendors, so it'd be an extra thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, and some of them, there, there were only twenty-eight vendors. Some of them had some more spaces, you know, as well, like the red umbrellas.
Per space, right, to offset the nonprofit, just to get the math out there. So with that, and you, and if, if someone had two spaces, they're spending an extra seventy instead of three hundred, they're spending...
You're talking about for the for-profit?
Yeah, yeah. And you think that that would...
I think I will lose vendors.
That'll lose vendors.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So...
All right, thank you, Ms. Arias. Any further questions for her, and we can open up the council discussion?
No more questions.
Mr. Doring, do you?
I'm good. It just, it fascinates me how these, these issues come up and, yeah, very interesting. I can see the, I can see both sides of the issue in terms of the nonprofit, but I think we need to cover our costs. I don't think it's, it's good policy to say, well, we never did before, so we're not going to do it now, or that, that kind of thing. But I do like the idea of finding sponsors for the nonprofit spaces and doing what we can there. So I, I'm supportive of the staff's recommendation in general.
So I've been involved with the, the perceived or real inequities of the Harvest Festival proceeds, I guess you would say, for, I don't know, eight years. And this is definitely a step in the right direction. The ticket situation encouraged both giving away free tickets and the nonprofits selling their stuff for cash so that they didn't have to pay the percentage, so it was not a great scenario. And it was, there was a lot of, and they originally, the original group took twenty percent of the gross proceeds. So if you had an expensive item that you were selling, an expensive cost like tri-tip or beer, it, people felt it wasn't fair. And it wasn't fair that twenty percent of the proceeds was taken when the for-profits were just charged a flat fee. So for years, the nonprofits were actually pushing for a flat fee like this. So, so in that sense, it, it's, I, I think it's, it's definitely moving in the right direction. What I, I don't like the idea of us charging the nonprofits though, in general, because I think that, like the musical picnics, this is just really, this event is really like the soul of our community, and it's really a great opportunity for the nonprofits to not just make money, but to be out there. And I, I haven't seen the financials in a few years, but I did see one year where there was some, a couple, a couple children, and their profit was a hundred and thirty-five, they made a hundred and thirty-five dollars selling chocolate chip cookies. So, so that would deter someone like them, but, but I think that if, when I did the math, the costs were seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars minus the sixty-three hundred from the for-profit, which left us with thirteen hundred and fifty, which is five hundred short of what we're making from the nonprofits. I don't like us, and I realize there's expenses we do not anticipate, and that would cover some of those. So I guess what I would like to see is some sort of provision that if the, if the, if the, if the Harvest Festival makes money, the money gets returned to the nonprofits that had to pay the fee as a, as a reimbursement. I mean, I, I mean, really, in a perfect world, I'd like to see the city cover, cover the cost, but I really, I realize what, what we're under, the strictures that we're under, but if we could find money in the budget for that. But I, if, if there could be some, because in the past, one of the other things is, in the past, the Harvest Festival has been fairly profitable. I mean, there's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars sitting in account right now as profit from the Harvest Festival. So, but, so I just, I just, I just, I would, I don't like to see the nonprofits charge, I'm okay with them being charged a hundred and twenty-five dollars because everybody needs to contribute, but I'd rather not, I'd rather we not make money off of them. So if there is, if there's money that is made at the Harvest Festival that's left over, I'd like to see it returned to the nonprofits.
I, I like that idea, and, and, you know, I'm part of an organization that's historically had tables, and we end up making a good deal of profit such that paying for the table, I mean, there's other folks that would like to use it too, and so paying for the table is absorbed into the expenses of that day, and it hasn't been an issue. It may not be true for everyone, but I know at least a few that are, that are making a good deal of money that day. And I think that you're, the way to, the way to correct this and is to, you know, so then the question is, what if someone gets a sponsor, and I think that's a great idea? And we might find that all fourteen get sponsored, or if it's really ten, because it's fourteen spaces and some take two, all ten get sponsored, then, you know, problem fixed, no issue. If, if we have excess cash after expenses, then we distribute it back to those ten. But should those that got a sponsor not get cash back, right? So, you know, I think that we could, we could say, look, we just, we just split it by the number of groups that, that actually rented, and if they got a sponsor, then kudos to them, they made more for their nonprofit.
Here's what I would suggest on this. Rather than try and work that out now, let's see whether it makes a profit and direct staff, that if it does make a quote profit, it come back with a recommendation as to how to reimburse the not-for-profits.
Yeah, I like that.
And I, and I do think, one, one thing that caused me to think about this though, just, is that, you know, we're waiving two-hundred, these are, it's a little bit like an encroachment fee, these parking permit, the parking spots. But we're waiving two-hundred dollars for the school district, but not for our nonprofits, so, whatever. I think that there is, I don't think it's, I don't think it's bad to have a flat fee, and I think that's what the nonprofits were wanting originally. I just would like to see if there is some, we'll do a re, an accounting at the end.
At the end, yeah. Is that satisfactory to you, Mr. Doring?
I, I think that's an excellent idea. I'm glad you brought it up.
Yeah. All right, at this point, the chair would entertain them. The chair has one further comment, actually, which is that, going back to the Parks and Recreation Commission. I must say, I did attend their meeting where they went through this. I was really impressed by how organized they were, the detail of the information they had before them, the methodical way they approached these issues. And as I think I've said in the past, dealing with a planning commission, my general sense of it... is to, uh, defer to, uh, the expert body that we appoint, which spends a lot of time and effort dealing with these things and which I am extremely grateful, quite frankly. Uh, but I do believe that, uh, Councilmember Kroll has come up with an excellent suggestion and, uh, and we can deal with that, uh, if we make a profit down the road. Staff keeps this mind and comes back and informs us after the Harvest Festival whether we made money or didn't make money. And then we'll just deal with it.
Well, the other thing that may be obvious, but this system and what's been set up and designed here, I think, makes this, both of these events sustainable for the long term, which is, which is key. Um, and we have a, a, a way to ensure that they're gonna continue and that, uh, they'll continue to be great, great events here in our community.
All right, well, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve, uh, the staff recommendation.
Move approval?
Second.
Ms. Black?
Come for Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Merrick Albright?
Yes. Uh, that takes us to item eighteen. Uh, consideration proposed approval of a resol- approval of a resolution approving an in-lu water neutrality fee in the amount of thirty-eight thousand for a tentative parcel map at six oh one Fulton Lane. Mr. Palmer, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the, the owner of the parcel at six oh one Fulton Lane submitted a tentative parcel map to divide the single fourteen plus or minus acre parcel into two residential parcels. That map was reviewed, reviewed by the City Council in November of two thousand and fourteen. The condition of approval for that project included a water neutrality analysis to be submitted with the design review application. Subsequently, the owner has submitted that design re- review application and the water neutrality analysis. Um, the water neutrality analysis actually, instead of proposing off-site retrofits, proposes to provide, um, alternative man- means of meeting the city's water neutral policy. The code does allow for this, but it, it only at the council approval. Um, attached the water neutrality report to the staff report identifies that there are one thousand three hundred and seventy-four gallons per day increased demand as a result of the project, which would require the retrofit of approximately nineteen single-family homes. Uh, the owner is requesting that instead of, uh, doing those off-site retrofits, that they be allowed to, do an alternative method. Uh, the staff report, I, I characterize it as an in-lu fee. Um, it could also be considered, um, just an alternative method as, as stated in the municipal code. Um, the idea is that they would fa- pay this fee and the city would use it to fund a leak study to help us identify potential leaks within the city system. And then if there's any additional funds left over, perform any, um, repairs that we identified that would save water. Uh, if the council doesn't approve this in-lu water neutrality fee, the project will be required to install the off-site retrofits to offset the project's water demand. And again, that's estimated to be nineteen residences based on the current methodology.
All right, any preliminary questions of staff? Let me open the public hearing. Yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brad Oldenbrook. Uh, I'm the, the owner there, Steve, uh, said of six oh, we're calling it six oh one Fulton and, um, and then the subdivided small lot is six oh three Fulton as a placeholder. And just quick background, you touched on Steve, that, um, we purchased the land. It was, uh, an otherwise abandoned vineyard back in, um, May of two thousand and fourteen. We did receive the approval to subdivide the small lot off, um, November of two thousand and fourteen, that same year. And then, um, fast forward to October of fifteen, uh, submitted the application for design review for both of the homes. And I've finally made it here to specifically address the water, our proposal to meet the water neutrality ordinance. So, um, I just wanted to, um, just to highlight that the, the first reason for us proposing this is, is yeah, one, of a lack of, um, readily available fixtures to retrofit. But it's also, it's more so, um, here to, uh, present a creative and joint effort with staff to address the, um, you know, the clarifications and/or potential changes of the water neutrality ordinance that we're up against as a city. Our effort is to provide, uh, a means by meeting the same goals, um, by approving good development, but in a way that results in a net zero burden on the current, uh, municipal system. And, um, our proposal, what we're, we've found to be known as non-revenue water, which is clean water, um, created by the municipal system, but then lost by either meters not accurately being read, by leaks happening because pipes aren't up to standard or in compromising situations, or just consistent leaks, for example, um, that is produced clean water, but again, not revenue, um, producing. So it's our goal, uh, to identify these inefficiencies, basically by proposing some in-lu, um, um, money to fund basically a study to find and fix those things that we believe will not only offset our water needs, uh, but also water needs, um, over and beyond, um, well into the future. So we feel like it's a very good proposal. I think it's, it is a, it's a combined thought with staff and us. Um, we proposed this and, and came together in a number of meetings, the time it's taken to co- to come here. And, um, appreciate your consideration. I just put a note here that we'd hope that, um, in conclusion, uh-
I, I consider this to be a land use, uh, application, so the twelve-minute rule would apply.
Thank you. I'll go, I'll wrap it in twenty seconds. Um, just that the, um, I just wanted to also paint the picture that I hope you can see the positive results of, of this proposal. And, um, to propose our project under these conditions on this one-time basis. And that if our proposal is good enough to initiate a discussion on a policy-wide changes, that, um, that the project can be the initiator of these discussions, but not the, um, played with the delay of a process of approving a new policy, um, regarding this. So, um, thank you again and, uh, look forward to the conversation.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Uh, my name is Barb, Bobby Monette, and I'm speaking as a resident. I, um, I think this is a great idea to, to, to be finding solutions to our water problem, short-term and long-term. Um, I'm a little confused about, th- I'll just say a couple of things. I just heard, I believe, that the money would be used to hire a consultant to find the leaks and other problems. And if there was money left over, that those leaks and other problems would be fixed. So if that is accurate, what I think I just heard, um, that means that if the money is used this way, we might find the problems, but no water will be saved. If the money were used to retrofit nineteen, um, structure or commodes, there would be a savings immediately. I'm not sure that this might be a false dichotomy. First of all, I'm thinking there really is a number-one issue in this town. I think there really should be money being spent right now on finding the leaks and other, maybe there is. But I think if that should be going on anyway, and then the money needs to be, if we're gonna use our money anywhere, it needs to be to keep our water. I mean, the water is more important than roads. The roads are important, but the water is, is absolutely essential. And so I'm thinking that this is a false dichotomy. I think we should be retrofitting and finding leaks and fixing leaks and finding the revenue to do that as a number-one goal. And if this threatens in any way the water neutrality policy, I think that is, is something to consider. So I think, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I have these concerns as well.
Thank you very much. Any further, uh, public hearing, uh, public comment? All right, uh, I'll close the public comment and invite, uh, council discussion. And, uh, I'm gonna take the privilege of leading off since, uh, I had a lot to do with the, uh, current water neutrality policy. Uh, I think it's important to focus on, uh, code thirteen point one two point oh five oh C. It says, "In place of, or in combination with retrofitting and/or payment of an in-lu retrofit fee as allowed in subsections A and B of this section, an applicant may petition the City Council to allow an alternative innovative method of mitigating water use for new development." In other words, as I read that, uh, it's not necessary for us to find unusual hardship or impracticality. What is being pro- proposed is in place of A and B. But where I have difficulty, and Ms. Monette really touched on it, is it must, it must be an innovative method of mitigating water use. In other words, a study does not mitigate, uh, uh, water use. And that's what troubles me. If, uh, the study we're in and we knew where the leaks were and we could say to ourselves, okay, uh, with this money, uh, we can go in and dig up the street and save, uh, one point four acre feet, uh, of water per year, I wouldn't have a problem with it. Uh, but a, a study in my, uh, to my reading, uh, uh, at least tentatively at this point, is not a mitigation of water use, uh, and that's the trouble that I'm having. And, and I'm extremely concerned, uh, that, that, that this is not the forum, uh, for, uh, undertaking to revise, uh, uh, our, uh, water neutrality, uh, uh, policy. Maybe it should be revised at some point, but that's a very large discussion. So that's, uh, that's my sense of it.
But doesn't, doesn't section B say that if the City Council determines that actual retrofitting of existing residential and non-residential buildings is impractical or constitutes an unusual hardship on any applicant, it may authorize the city, may authorize the payment to the city of an in-lu retrofit fee equivalent to the cost of retrofitting a sufficient number of existing homes with U L F toilets and other required water-saving devices and so on and so forth. So I think we also do have a, a section right above what you just read that contemplates hardship. So, one of the questions is, is there a hardship? Is it really hard to find nineteen homes? And before we even go there, I, you know, if we had the money, maybe we do have the money to do a study, right? We might find leaks. I think we do need to be innovative in, in this moment in time. And if we're not already funding a study, I commend someone for coming up with the idea of saying, hey, I wanna fund this study so you can actually go out and do it. Whether it's to the letter of the law of section C or B and we can fit it into here, I think it's a different discussion. And so I like that someone's thinking outside the box and, and hopefully being impetus for, for us to actually go and do this. And the question is, how much loss do we think we have? And could this thirty-eight thousand lead to saving far more than nineteen right, retrofits currently? I mean, it may be that hypothetically it's great, but practically, you know, the cost to fix these, 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 uh, leaks is so exorbitant that it's, it's prohibitive and we'll never really get there?
I don't know.
Right, and I'm trying to think off the top of my head. I think our loss rate is in the ten to fifteen percent range, if I'm remembering right. Um, so that's, that's kind of the percentage we're looking at as a total system of the nineteen hundred acre feet or so we deliver every year. Ten, ten to fifteen percent maybe is, is loss.
That could be a hundred and ninety acre feet.
Could be, yeah.
Which is what probably, I mean, how do we compare that to the fourteen hundred? How many gallons per day? Thirteen forty-two? I don't know these calculations.
Haven't done them.
I'm just trying to put the,
Well.
The, the order of magnitude comparison to what initiating a study like this might lead to in terms of savings. And the question is, if we find, you know, can we, can we practically find the leaks? And if we do, what does it cost to actually fix them, right?
And from staff's perspective, um, the reason this was attractive enough to bring forward at the council was that frankly, we don't know what those improvements would be to, to fix those leaks. So we have these losses that we've identified in the system that we calculate each year, but we don't know where they're occurring really. And so that's the problem is we, we kind of know where some older areas of town are where we suspect where they could be happening. But what that, we'd need to do with a study, like you're suggesting, in order to get to the point where we have a list of improvements that I could tell applicants, hey, here's an alternative to offset retrofits, we need to fund this improvement. I don't have that list right now. And so that's why, like, oh, this is a good idea. We could, we could come with a list of projects, that's the goal, come with a list of projects that we could put in this C I P. And then as projects come forward, we could say, well, you could fund this project or fund a fair share of this project. And we know that it's gonna save X amount of water.
Right.
Do we have, um, do we have any idea as to what a study like that would actually cost? Is this thirty-eight thousand only ten percent of that study or is it, does it actually fund the study?
So this would fund a portion of the city, it wouldn't fund the entire system. Um, but I, I honestly don't know what the costs of an entire system would be. I mean, it's, it's likely, you know, more like a couple hundred thousand dollars than, as opposed to thirty-eight thousands. And I don't, I don't have a real good feeling for how much the system we get with thirty-eight thousand.
We could do some neighborhood, where maybe the pipes are older.
That's right.
We suspect that there would be-
Exactly. We target an area where we, based on operator knowledge, based on where we've, uh, maybe where we've been replacing a lot of, uh, services, laterals, or where the pipes are old or we know the material is questionable, we'd, we'd focus on those areas.
Well, I think you have thirty-three thousand dollars in the fund that could be used for that purpose, if I read the staff report correctly.
I think that's right.
There is thirty-three thousand dollars available in the retrofit account now, um, which in the past has been used for rebates and water efficiency programs. So, um, we could use some of that. We'd have, I'd have to work with the water conservation coordinator, figure out how much of that we're gonna need, um, next year. Cause that, that money is spent, there's thirty-three thousand now, but we did, we did spend some money this, I mean, that, that's the account balance estimate at the end of this year. There was money spent this year. So we do spend money out of that account every year, even though there's, there's currently a balance. Um, it is utilized for rebate programs and whatnot.
And then, uh, Mr. Pitts, in terms of the unaccounted-for water loss, as the Public Works Director was saying, it's a, it's calculated every year. And our range in at least the past few years has been within, uh, the range of other municipal systems.
Right.
It's not out of, out of whack?
It's not out of whack, or at least it hasn't been out of whack in the last, uh, two or three or four years.
Right. The real question is, are those just efficiencies that can never be achieved, i.e. grabbing it back? Is that just sort of, you know, part of doing business or are there ways to, to address it? I don't know the answer.
In other way, in other words, is throwing money at a study really not that-
Well, I, 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 again, may- maybe the Public Works should, should, Director should, uh, respond to this. But my sense of it is that a study would be a very worthwhile thing at some point.
Well, I just want, yeah, I just wanted to add into the, the loss discussion, it's, you're correct. It's not just losses, it's losses plus fire flow. So if we have to go fight a fire, or if we go do flushing, it's that kind of stuff, it's un-metered use. So it's, it's, and, you know, when people connect as new fire sprinkler systems, they have to test them. Those types of things that aren't metered.
Do we have other sources, be it grant money, um, or otherwise, to do this study with right now?
We would rely on rates right now, the water rates.
Okay, so we'd just come out of our-
Uh, un- what do you call it? Unrestricted position, yeah.
Yeah, which we, we wanna, you know, continue to have a good balance there. Cause, and I, I understand what, what Ms. Monette's saying, but I, I think that, to me, it's sort of fungible. Like at some point, we need to do this study to figure out where we can save water. And then we need to spend money to actually save it. And whether this thirty-eight thousand goes to the study or to actually make remediate, remediations later in the system that will actually save the water, it's sort of six one way, half dozen the other from a practical standpoint. The money has to come from somewhere. You can't fix it until you figure out where it is. The longer we wait, the more water we lose, right? And so my general sense, if we can find a way to show that there is a hardship in finding nineteen and going after them, would be to support this and, and be proactive and move forward so we have some funding for a study like this. And, and I think, I think that section B of, of thirteen one two zero five zero does give us some latitude, um, if there, if there is a, a hardship, um, on an applicant.
And I would just like to briefly add, uh, in along those lines. Um, we are seeing more and more applicants coming to the planning department expressing difficulty in or concern over finding the available retrofits. Uh, at the same time, we do get, uh, information from individuals who say, hey, these, these properties are available for retrofit. Uh, but that does add additional administrative efforts on the building department to ask to ensure that those are done. And frankly, I don't feel that the program has been as administered, as well administered as it could be previously to ensure that those retrofits have occurred and, and they're not being double-dipped, et cetera. But we are improving both the administrative element of it, uh, and having multiple discussions with folks in the development community who are looking for alternatives because of this expressed difficulty.
Right, but keep in mind now that the, uh, that the point or the, the policy purpose behind the, um, water neutral policy is to ensure that demand inside the city does not increase. Uh, and to the extent that they're savings, uh, it goes into a reserve, which the City Council then can use for a public purpose, uh, whether it is, uh, affordable housing or whether, uh, I would argue, I think, a, a new hotel where we may well have to make the water available, uh, in order for it to, uh, uh, move forward. Uh, and, uh, I'm hard-pressed to think that this proposal, uh, fits, uh, fits that. This is really, in my mind, uh, uh, not consistent with, uh, the water neutral policy. And if the policy needs to be changed or updated, or, uh, we've saved considerably more water than we thought we were, then it needs to be done in the context of a policy adjustment and not tonight in the, in the context of a specific application. That's because I think if, if we do it here tonight, we're gonna be pressed by, uh, uh, other- we're going to be pressed by other developers, perhaps developers with larger projects, perhaps some who say, hey, we're willing to abide by the water neutral policy, or think they can. And then they're going to come in and say, but look, you did it here, and I want the same treatment. That's what's bothering me.
But I'm confused as to what we're talking about changing. This is not new language under 1312050. This is the existing language, right?
Right, yes, absolutely.
And so are we, actually, I didn't hear anyone suggest a policy amendment.
No, the question is, in my mind, is what we're doing by allowing this exception undermining the intent of the water neutrality policy? And I don't know, but that's the question we need to understand.
Well, look, that's a, that's a big discussion in my mind, because I'm not sure that these water neutrality studies that have been done for a ton of projects are really all that valid. And they may be underestimating the real use that's going to occur. And what if everyone that's bought a second home in the last 20 years retires at the same time, right? So, you know, that's, to me, that's a whole other, you know, can of worms in larger discussion that probably needs to be revisited from time to time. But how many, how many retrofits are there that exist today that you are aware of that have been brought to your, like, someone said, hey, we're available for retrofit?
None have come to my department, except recently, when this item was on the agenda, we got an email identifying that there's multiple units on Voorhees Circle that had not been retrofitted. I think the quote was, there's definitely 19 available there, or something along those lines. Public Works Department does have a retrofit program where people can come and utilize the funds that are available, but I don't know that there are any pending applications. I'm not aware of any, but...
Well, yeah, specific to the applications for the retrofit program, there are people that come in, I can't remember what the number is. We do process quite a number a year of toilet retrofits, people that the city processes. But as far as development projects coming in that are asking for this, there's this one, and, I mean, I've heard from the local engineering firm of another one, as soon as this one on the agenda, they called me up and like, hey, I have another one, could we do the same thing? And I told them, well, well, no, we're not doing, there's not a policy-wide discussion at this point, it's specific to this project. So we encourage you to go, you know, find retrofits, and if you want, we, you know, we can come with an alternative proposal, we can present to council, but, and we're sticking to the policy the way it's written. And as far as a list of people that are wanting retrofits, we, the city doesn't maintain that. It's something I've asked the water conservation coordinator to work on, and I've put it in her project workload, but frankly, she doesn't have time to try and do that. You know, but that's the idea that Noah, as was mentioned earlier, was we would have some program where people could sign up on the website or something and have their name and number available to development projects that wanted to retrofit their property.
But if someone calls, and we've got their number and their name, we can put it in a spreadsheet, right? We don't need to set up some complicated website submitter form to actually know what might be out there right now.
Right, but there's outreach involved. That's, I mean, that's the point. You're right. It could be as simple as a spreadsheet or just drawn something. But right now, there's no outreach, you know, people are not knocking on our door asking for them.
But I understand and appreciate the policy discussion here entirely. And the policy is, go find the retrofits. If you can't, then we have the latitude to say, hey, here's a creative, we can take the INLU fee, put it towards something. Is there, you know, if there's two or three that have reached out that say they want something done, could it be a combination of that plus INLU?
In fact, section C contemplates a combination.
It does.
And so staff, staff in working with the applicant was looking at the applicant's challenges. Staff read this as being in line with the current policy, and however, that's why it's also coming to council for a review of that. Is this idea or concept in line with the current policy, but also looking forward to some of the economic development measures that the city is trying to implement, such as seeking a hotel development or something along those lines. If, if we had a leakage study in place that identified X number of leaks, we know that there is development interest that could come along that, in theory, could fund that. But again, that is a policy question that the council would have to make. Are they interested in doing that? And that's also why Director Palmer was, was bringing this forward as an individual project level and not as a policy discussion, because he recognized and understood the level of involvement that would be required if the council does not see this proposal as in line with the current policy.
Right. Well...
But this would only fund a very small portion of a comprehensive citywide study.
That's correct. We have not, we don't have any ideas of cost of the study or the scope that $38,000 would cover. Again, working with the applicant and Mr. Palmer, in a city that's over 100 years old, there are numerous leaks. I mean, it would be guaranteed essentially that there are numerous leaks in pipes currently existing.
Well, and I guess the other issue I have with this statute, which maybe if, if our, if our policy is to require actual retrofitting or an INLU fee in the case of an unusual hardship, it seems like it's always going to be in a, it's, what is an unusual hardship? I think you brought that up. And it's always going to be an unusual hardship in this case if we're going to require that, right? So it's sort of a circle.
Well, my argument would be that it undermines the policy to consider that an unusual hardship.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
We don't have a database of people that are calling in and saying, hey, I've got a retrofit opportunity, because we're not creating a tool or mechanism to actually do the retrofit. So how can you require that you do it? And then we get into territory, yeah, I don't, I'm not going to go there.
But I do believe in the policy that we need to ensure the city's demand does not increase. And if we, if we do need to increase it, it should be for affordable housing or a hotel development that will generate some sort of revenue, not for a private residential development. So...
I'm just thinking out loud, it's not clear in the, in the ordinance, but it seems to me we, at some point, need to grapple with, well, whose responsibility is it to do the outreach? Is it the city's responsibility, or is it the applicant and developer's responsibility? It seems like, and I wasn't around when that was developed, it seems like we've created a system that is faulty, because that has not been addressed. Seems like it should be the city to be the one taking that, that step to do the outreach. I mean, we could send out a postcard to everybody and check the box, do you want to retrofit? What kind of toilets do you have? Send the, send the postcard back, and you can get, you know, probably 100 overnight. We should be doing that, in my view, and not the developer. But at the same time, I agree with, with the mayor that I do believe that this would undermine the water neutrality policy. I don't think, and I think it would set a precedent that would come back to haunt us. I can see that it's impractical. We've made it impractical, frankly, because we haven't done a good job in terms of the outreach. And I don't know, I'm not questioning anybody about that, it's just that we should be, we should be maintaining the list and getting out the outreach. So we've created the impracticality, but the question is, is every other applicant going to come in from here on out asking for the same thing? And therefore, this one may not be the, you know, the huge impact, but each and every one following will be an impact. And that's more of what I'm concerned about.
But from a legal perspective, I mean, look, I want to be neutral. I want to actually figure out how to get ahead and start recycling water, so we're actually creating more usable water and banking more. But we're not talking about allocating unused water that we found in the system. This legally says, except as allowed in some sections, B and C in this section, new development shall completely offset its water requirement by installing a city-approved, you know, blah, blah, blah. So we've, we've set up a system where, where if there's hardship, and I guess that hardship can be proven, then we would go ahead and allow it. And I still like the idea of having some funds to go towards looking, maybe it's initiating that program, because that program isn't happening. My recollection is Kathy in planning used to actually keep a list of people that wanted to be retrofit, and then a lot of those got done with...
Well, I can see using some of the money to do the outreach, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
In addition to contributing to a leak study or starting to build a fund for that.
I don't feel like we should, we should be saying, oh, this isn't consistent with saving water and being neutral. It's actually, we might end up being way ahead, right? And we might get, we might get 100, we might get 50 acre feet beyond where we are today by doing this, while we take some risk that we find nothing to fix.
By doing what?
By funding a study or doing the outreach, right?
If we have no money to do the fix.
Right.
But, you know, I think that we definitely need to start keeping a database and a spreadsheet so that, so that we, so that it isn't an unusual hardship for a developer, that they can come in and say, hey, 19, 19 offices, 19 houses, retrofits, great, here's a list, it'll happen, pay the fee. I think that's the way this...
And I would not rule out...
...policy was originally set up to function.
And I would not rule out either, that there may well be some significant commercial retrofitting still inside the city too. For example, at the coffee house, the toilets there were supposed to have been retrofitted, but they were not. That's very high use. The city bathrooms in the parks, there are no urinals in the men's room, in the men's rooms. That's, that's, you know, 30 years out of date not to have urinals in the men's rooms in the parks. So there are opportunities out there. But again, my, my basic point, and I've said it, is that I'm worried, very worried about the policy implication and that this, allowing this would put us in the position of undermining our water neutrality policy. And that's the problem I have. I don't view it as consistent with it, because when we adopted, I mean, when we went through this to adopt the water neutrality policy, the basic objective was to prevent people from buying their way out of it. That was, that was the basic objective of it when we did it. And I know I shouldn't say this, but in the context of the Safe Yield Committee, I fear that, for better or for worse, I've probably drafted this.
I don't, and, and don't get me wrong, I don't want to undermine it either. I want to be thinking ahead and thinking creatively as to how we can make progress. So what type of hardship was contemplated when this was drafted? Like, what would have been a hardship where we would have said, it's not possible, therefore, we'll take an INLU fee? Or what have we taken in the past? Because that's, again, what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, me too.
Why'd we put this language in here?
Look, I don't think, I cannot think myself of any prior instance where we've gone off on the basis impracticality or unusual hardship. But again, the language is that even if that were shown, it's not required that we do it. We would have discretion to do it.
Correct.
And where I would be, even if this were impractical or constituted unusual hardship, I would not exercise the discretion to authorize it, because at the end of the day, I'm very concerned it would end up undermining the policy.
But what I would say is, if we, if we don't do this, we need to immediately put together some sort of database, or take some of the $33,000 that's in there to do some outreach, so that we do have 19 people that can immediately be retrofitted, and, and there's no problem. It doesn't, it's not impracticable, and it's not a hardship, you just, oh.
By the way, these hot water instantaneous dispensing systems that are electric, on-tap heaters, save a tremendous amount of water if you've got a long run between your tank and a sink. And most older homes do. And even some newer homes do. So it's not just retrofitting toilets. And so I guess, you know, where I'm at on this is that, you know, we haven't gotten any answers as to what a hardship is. A hardship sort of has to be proven. And we're not, I don't think we're going to be convinced tonight that there aren't enough retrofits out there to get this done, in that maybe if one looks a little bit deeper and can't find them, then maybe then there's a hardship. But I'll ask the applicant, how hard have you looked?
Got to let me look, open the public hearing here.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Sure, we'll open the public hearing, let you respond briefly.
It's a great conversation, I mean, definitely. And to absolutely clarify, I mean, we are not proposing to resolve, you know, funding a comprehensive, you know, leak study plan, and then also providing the money to fix that. However, you know, this proposal is, and it is, sort of what Noah hit on as well, is it's not coming from, hey, I just want to be a lazy guy, you know, and just pay fees and lieu. This is coming from our firm specifically, as well as discussions with other consultants in St. Helena, and general contractors are considering making a business out of consistently doing that outreach, but they're not getting paid for it, you know, really, basically. But a lot of us have spent time sending out the flyers, and you don't get any response anymore. And, and so it's a proposal, basically, in front of you as leadership to make a decision of how you're going to address the situation that's sort of imminent and at hand. I agree that there are, I brought up the park toilets as a possibility to you, Mayor, just yesterday. And there are a couple places where we can go. But it's actually, from my analysis with Delta, it's not 19 homes, it's 26 homes. And by the time you identified 26 homes, you probably have had to reached out to maybe 1,000 homes before you get, you know, sort of enough to do that. And quite frankly, we haven't found the 2.6% that volunteer. The people who want the retrofits have already said okay. And then, you know, there's a lot of people who actually don't want them, because they feel the low flow doesn't see their flush as well or shower as well, aside from your last comment, you know, about water heater retrofits. But just to paint, yeah, again, a further picture for your education, a lot of this has been done already. And so the idea that we had was, hey, look, yeah, it's not comprehensive at all, but it's a starting point. And maybe at the risk of, you know, having to answer other developers like myself and say no, or with something, at least an answer to them. If there was a list that you guys had of 20 homes or 26 homes, or whatever it was, I wouldn't be here. You know, we would just go do it, because that's what we can do. And we're happy to play by the rules or the ordinances that are established. This is by no means some way to undermine a good, you know, based policy. However, I would absolutely confirm, I mean, that we're coming in sort of as a hardship, because we've got months that we've been submitted, you know, back in October of last year. And now we're finally here to talk about water neutrality, seven months later. And, you know, we're going to say, okay, good luck, you know, go try to find it again. We're just saying, look, start somewhere, you know, be inspired, start somewhere, know that there's a problem that we have right now. And then, and then take that study and say, look, everyone else, we, you know, maybe with that leaks, with the money, whatever, spend a little more time, develop a list, do some outreach. And then you're creating then a way to, to offer up the next person to, here's the retrofits. Here's also a portion of the municipal system that's been identified as a leak, and it's going to cost 50 some odd thousand dollars. So you say, okay, cool, we took 38 grand to find out the problem, we're going to allow another 50 grand to come in to the next couple of projects, and then we're going to address that. And then address that as a, as a portion of the system at a time, as opposed to feel like you've got to address the whole system at once before you do something different. Anyway, that's my encouragement.
I'm curious what you would do if, just assume that we have no more need for retrofits, or that we just eliminated that incentive. What would happen in your position at that point? What would you suggest? So you would not be able to get to water neutrality unless there was some other way to do it, true? I mean, in a way, it's the city kind of bending over for a public policy reason to allow development to occur.
Right.
But I'm wondering if we didn't have that in place, then what would happen on the development side?
And I think...
It's a rhetorical question, I'm, you know, I'm just curious.
No, 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 and I, I think it's, it's, it's looking at the next step beyond where we're at now. I think we're able to create a transition period that identifies things that we can do to still keep the system neutral. However, there will be a point beyond that, that the system's capacity, you know, may need to be looked at. And then from, you know, five years back, maybe, or three years back, whatever, it begins a funding of an expansion of that system. If, you know, again, everything else under CEQA makes sense to then allow more expansion. But I think that's even another really good question, just a little bit farther down the road.
All right.
This is...
No, no, the applicant, the applicant's allowed back.
This is where I'm thinking right now.
Got to let me close the public hearing.
I'm open-minded. I agree, I agree with the mayor that I'm afraid that this undermines our water neutral policy. But I am starting to believe that this, while in a normal situ- that the hardship was created by the city, and that's by not keeping a database so that this could, so that this policy could function the way it was envisioned. And is that, is that the applicant's fault? I don't think so. So, you know, I, it bothers me, because I don't think that in a normal circumstance, retrofitting 19 homes or whatever it is to offset is a hard, is an unusual hardship. It's only an unusual hardship because we didn't do any outreach or keep the data. That's what's created the unusual hardship. So that's, that's why I'm leaning towards allowing this INLU fee. However, I, it would just be in this case only, and I think that we should use some of the, some of the 33,000 to do a little outreach, so that the next developer that comes along can actually in- developer that comes along can actually enforce our own policies. This is unfortunately, to me, a little bit of an example of how we haven't, we have no backup. So, it, you know, and he's got a project that now, I don't know how long it would take to find nineteen retrofits. I have no idea how long that would take, but, um, if we have a policy like this, we have to keep, we have to get the backup in place to, to make it work, really. That's where I'm coming from right now, but I'm, I'm open-minded on the topic.
Mr. Pitts?
Yeah, look, this is a challenging one, because, um, you know, water conservation, water neutrality, thinking to the future, all of these things need to be weighed. And I was even thinking, and it's not, unfortunately, a, a, an innovative method of mitigating water use just yet, but installing, asking someone to install purple pipes, instead of just saving water. So, we're setting the stage for the future. We need to start thinking more about recycling water, and not just, that, that'll help us get ahead on the neutrality front. But, that wouldn't work with the language that exists today, because it wouldn't technically mitigate water use.
Right.
And I see that. I don't want to undermine it, um, but I do want to, um, set the tone that we're thinking outside of the box, we're being creative, and we're trying to be proactive. We, we have set up a system where, if there are no retrofits available anymore, then maybe we shouldn't be taking applications for new development if, if the, if the sat, if the, um, requirements we know coming in can't be met. And, and hopefully, we do caveat that you may or may not find these retrofits. But if I put myself in, in the applicant's shoes here, they started a process some time ago, and they've, you know, they've invested in that, and all of a sudden, they're ready to, to retrofit. And I do think there's sincerity, this isn't trying to get out of doing the work, I think they've tried. And, uh, so, look, I don't, I don't want to create precedent, but I do, this might be an opportunity to actually create a positive precedent, which is, we're going to start being more proactive about finding these retrofits, and also, um, looking for leaks in our system, and finding a way, maybe we only do one neighborhood, maybe we can only afford to do, you know, a subset of Crinella, um, or wherever, but if we, if we, you know, come across some, some major leaks there, then I think there's a, there's a good possibility we'll be way ahead of the game than we would have been with just nineteen retrofits. And that's exciting to me. And that's, that's sort of, you know, um, where we, where we need to be going, whether it's with our money or the INLO fee at the end of the day. So, um, those are my, my thoughts.
All right. Any further thoughts from you, Mr. Doring?
I, I'm more concerned about the precedent-setting, uh, element of this than the, um, the point you're making, although I do agree with you, it's a tough call here, for sure. I'm not sure, and it's all with respect to the applicant, I don't see the finding of the hardship. I mean, I, I, as a lawyer, I go, "Well, I've heard it, that it's a hardship." I'd be willing to explore the potential for, uh, something that's halfway, where half the, uh, retrofits, you know, aggressively pursued, and then the other half paid by, uh, an INLO fee, as a way of accomplishing both. But, um, you know, that would be a little delay, and I know that the applicant wouldn't want to do that, but I haven't seen, I, I've heard in general that, you know, general contractors have tried to put out surveys. I haven't seen any, anything in the star, I haven't seen any postcards, I haven't seen any aggressive, um, uh, attempt to seek retrofit applicants. So, I, I, you know, just in terms of the evidence in front of me right now, I'm not there yet. But I'm willing to talk further in terms of maybe saying, "Look, a little bit of retrofit, a little bit of money."
So, are you suggesting maybe a month of outreach, and seeing how many you come up with, and then revisiting this?
Something like that, yes. I mean, that's up to the applicant, I'm not, I'm just dropping the hint that I would oppose the, uh, the application right now, but I don't think, I, I've seen a showing of hardship, and I'm concerned about the precedent-setting value, or the element of this, where somebody else comes in later, and we're going to have a whole series of folks asking for this. Granted, too, probably, because we didn't set it up properly, but still, I don't want to, I don't want to set that precedent.
But, before you go, Alan-
And no disrespect to the mayor.
Are there city, are there city bathrooms that don't have urinals, where, you know, we know we're going to keep these facilities for some time, and those could be retrofit in the-
Crane Park?
Yeah, right? And, and can, can we look at that? Because we can estimate how much we'd save from those facilities that are publicly used, and, um, and, and sort of back into what that would be compared to, I mean, I know this is set up sort of for residential, but do we have the latitude? I mean, I guess that would be a innovative method of mitigating water use.
Like, do four bathrooms equal ten houses? Do four public restrooms equal ten houses, or?
Right, right, right.
Do we have data on that?
Well, we have the, we have the formulas available to calculate retrofits. If the direction is, is that Mr. Oldenburg's application, uh, isn't rising to the, the impracticality or the unusual hardship for, in this case, based on the email information we got today, and the existing public facilities, I think Mr. Oldenburg could meet his requirements for retrofitting, or come close to them with, with information we have now. Um, I, I, I wouldn't be, he, he's scheduled for a planning commission decision on next, a week from today, so, so we're not, I don't believe he's interested in, in continuing this project. We could, uh, bring back another application for a similar, um, asking a similar question if the council is saying, "Man, I'm not sure on this, but, but we may entertain it in the future, and if, if a different developer, a different applicant wants to come forward."
So, do we have another one in the pipeline like this?
Well, there's, there's enough interest, I mean, the McCorkle, uh, our town, St. Helena project is going to have to meet water neutrality. Um, there's a, a couple other multifamily projects that are interested in moving forward. One that's also on McCorkle that's been filed, so that they will have to meet water neutrality. There's multiple designer view application, I mean, there are, uh, the, the, uh, CIA project is going to have to meet water neutrality. So, there are enough large-scale projects that are going to have to meet water neutrality that, from staff's perspective, if, if the council is interested in pursuing this, this application would be an initial push to get a study going, and then, most likely, there would be additional fees that could cover costs of doing some of the repair work on infrastructure. This is part of the discussion that staff had with the applicant and Public Works Department in bringing this concept forward to councils. We believe that there is enough development interest, um, that could actually result in significant savings based on infrastructure improvements. That being said, the council's not interested in, uh, pursuing that with this application, that's fine, and we've, and I think Mr. Oldenburg could probably get there, um, but, obviously, it's going to be a fair amount of outreach for, on his part, but we, we will, regardless of the direction of the council today, improve our outreach to try to get additional retrofits. It's just with no additional funding, it's another unfunded mandate on city staff, you know, I mean, that's, that's things that we'll have to do.
Isn't there thirty-two thousand dollars in that account?
There is, there is resources in the account.
So, and I, look, I'm just sensing that this, this isn't going to get there. We're not going to get three votes tonight. And, and if you have, if you have, and I could be wrong, but if you, if you have the, the public urinals, which I think would be tremendous savings, I, I probably know ten people that would raise their hand tonight for some hot water instantaneous dispensing systems being installed, because it's going to bring, I'll raise my hand for it. And, and so, you know, to me, um, it seems to me that there's another way to get this done, but I think we still need to commence on this larger discussion of, you know, how do we fund, can we use this thirty-three thousand, what other grants are out there, to start looking at the leaks.
I couldn't agree with that more, but, uh, presumably, a, a study will be part of the, uh, capital improvement program and the rate increase when that comes forward. Public Works Director is shaking his head affirmatively.
Yes, yes, and I-
It will now.
And just, and I, you know, kind of, I don't want to do this, but I'm kind of regurgitating what's kind of already been said, but, you know, I've already, um, like I said, we already have staff working on some kind of outreach program. Based on the discussion here tonight, I will redouble those efforts and revisit with the city manager, and make sure I get the resources we need to make that happen. Um, clearly, it's, it's council's desire, and it's, it's badly needed for the development community, so, um, you know, I'll commit-
Otherwise, we're just going to face this every-
Right, right. So, we'll commit to doing that, so we can have a better understanding of when a true hardship is occurring. And that's what I can commit to.
Well, based on the, the discussion, the chair would entertain a motion to, uh, to disapprove of the proposed resolution. That's the way I can say it. Is there a motion to that effect?
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second? I will second it. Ms. Black?
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. You certainly forced an interesting discussion, and it will continue, I'm sure. All right, that takes us to number nineteen, uh, which is, uh, "Provide direction for the closure of the existing residential used motor oil recycling facility adjacent to fifteen-seventy-four Railroad Avenue." And, uh, Mr. Palmer, I guess you're on.
Yeah, I'm going to have lots, involve in lots of lively, lively discussion tonight. So, the city maintains and operates a used motor oil recycling facility located adjacent to this teen center, fifteen-seventy-four Railroad Avenue. It's unattended, and, and it's supposed to be used during daylight hours only. The facility is operated as a partnership with the county, and the city receives a five-thousand-dollar grant from CalRecycle through the state, um, which is passed through to the county to pay for a contract with Safety Clean to pick up the used oil and filters that, that are collected, and pay for educational materials. Public Works staff inspects the facility a few times a week, um, disposes of the used containers and trash that's left behind, cleans up oil spills and overflows, and locks the tank when it's full. Oh, yes. And then, when it's full, they contact Safety Clean, um, to come pick, pick up the used oil and filters. The county's recently notified the city that they no longer wish to continue operating under the current agreement, and, uh, the main reason for this is, there's been a recent contamination issue that happened this year, where used oil that was collected from the city of St. Helena site was contaminated by a foreign substance. Um, and they, and they had a, Safety Clean had to perform an extensive decon, decontamination of the oil tank and the container they used to haul that. Upper Valley Disposal Agency agreed to pay for that, um, I'm sorry, Upper Valley Waste Management Agency, agreed to pay for the extra cost, that decontamination, which was in the, I think, nine-thousand-dollar range. However, it's, it's unlikely that they would do that again with future problems. And so, the county has began reevaluating all these sites that are, that are unattended, and the potential risks. And there's, under the terms of the current agreement, the agreement doesn't discuss risk, doesn't discuss liability, doesn't discuss indemnity, or anything like that. So, they're, they're very leery, they don't want to continue in the terms of the current agreement. The agreement does allow them to cancel with a certain amount of notice. So, they reached out to us, said, "We want to cancel." We've been looking at, staff's been looking at this issue, and it's actually been something we were looking at before they even came to us, um, just because of the amount of staff time we take, um, to clean up the site. Um, and, in fact, in the staff part, there, there's pictures of a, of a spill that occurred recently.
Right.
Where people, and this happens frequently, where people overfill the tank, they, they try and fill it through the air vent instead of the proper filling tank when it's full already, so it overflows, um, they used, uh, they leave, um, containers there when it's full, and it, and it's a, not only is it a maintenance hazard for us, it's also a potential liability for the city if there was a major spill there, um, and a major leak, and some of the oil went out and impacted some of the ground around there. So, staff's recommendation, at this point, is, is to, obviously, go along with the termination of the agreement, which I don't know that we have really any, any way to stop them from terminating it. But, um, but, but beyond that, is to actually go ahead and close the site. This would save our staff time and, and materials we're called to inspect and maintain the facility. We would have to remove the existing structure, structures, fence the site, um, we'd want to do some extensive outreach to try and, um, make sure people know not to dump their used oil there. As I said, we, we haven't looked at this quite a bit, and, you know, there are numerous options for household customers to be able to dispose of their used oil. This isn't the only place they can go, they can take it to Clover Flat. And actually, the best thing they can do right now is, and I didn't know about this until we started researching this, is they can, um, they can just call Upper Valley Disposal Service and say, "Hi, I have used oil, I want you to come pick it up." And they'll come to their house, to the curb side, and pick it up. They'll even deliver the container for them. So, you call the Upper Valley Disposal, they'll bring you an empty container, you fill it up, you call them and say, "It's full, come get it," put it to curb, and then come get it. So, there, there's, there's other ways, there's better ways, more efficient ways of getting this done if you're a household, um, customer. So, um, staff's recommendation is to close the site, we would do some outreach to make sure that, kind of reduce the amount of illegal activity that happens after we close it. Um, the alternative to closing the site is basically to continue to operate as it is unattended, and then the city would assume the risk and liability. The county would no longer be a partner. We could probably try and still get reimbursement through the CalRecycle Grant Program, um, but we would be, the city would be assuming all the risk and liability for spills, contaminations, anything related to cleanup, and that nature. So, we're looking for the direction at this point, if we get direction from council to close it, um, we'll proceed down the path, um, discussing with the county what the next steps would be, if we start to do some outreach, we start to put plans in place to abandon the facility and close it, and get the tank removed.
Any preliminary questions of staff?
I have, um, one or two. The cost to fence the site, why do we need to fence it? Are there other ways to deter people from dropping stuff off there?
At this point, we could invest together ways, I just felt like that was the easiest thing to do. We, you just fence it, and people can't get in there, there's no, you know, there's no concrete path, there's no empty space, it's really obvious, we could put up a sign that says the site is closed, and it seems like that'd be the first step, because you'd want to, the, the decontamination, the, the cleaning of the tank, the removal of the tank, the cleanup of the concrete, any kind of oil that's in the soil around it, underneath it, could take some time.
Okay, so you're saying, I read this differently, I said, "The cost to remove the existing structures and fence," I was thinking, "You remove them, then you fence."
No, I think-
So, you want to fence it now, to shut down while you remove?
Yeah, and we haven't vetted this clearly, how the process would work, but I, I-
Makes sense.
As I was thinking about it, and talking to staff about it, I think that'd be the best way to move forward, to get it fenced, get it signed right away, while we figure out the next steps, and, yeah, get it closed.
Okay.
All right, uh, let me open the public hearing. Ms. Hines, you have anything to say? We'll close the public hearing. Any further-
You're from Texas, come on, just talk about oil.
Let me, uh, close the public hearing, and, uh, any further council discussion?
I'd say nope.
I move, move, move to take the staff's recommended action.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Emphatically, yes. All right, uh, this takes us to, uh, item twenty, uh, which is the, um, Fiscal Year Twenty-Fifteen-Sixteen Third Quarter Finance Report, third quarter being the quarter that ended March thirty-first, twenty sixteen. Ms. Mitz?
Thank you. And I do apologize, as my first slide comes up, I noticed I am already in next year's budget mode, and I put sixteen-seventeen on the slide, so, we're not quite there yet, thank heaven, but we're getting there. So, this is our quarterly update as directed by the city council. Um, so, just a little bit, just a little refresher on the revenue side for the general fund. Uh, general fund revenue is divided into the following categories. Um, and I did note that the, the primary categories are property tax, sales tax, and TOT, those are our primary contributors. In addition, we have other taxes, license and permits, fines and forfeits, intergovernmental interest in rents, and also charges for services and miscellaneous. Our general fund revenue to date, or sorry, through March thirty-first, is, uh, just about six-point-four million dollars, just a little over that. Uh, this does mean we have collected sixty-three percent to date, um, we are down one percent from last year. But that being said, but this being the final year of the triple flip, winding down, we are slated to get one large payment at the end of the year, as opposed to the beginning of the year, so that accounts for part of that differential. Um, although there is a one percent decrease, our revenue estimates are on track for fiscal year, again, my apologies, fifteen-sixteen. Our general fund revenue, you'll see the different categories that I briefly outlined. You'll see the revenue, um, for the fifteen-sixteen adjusted budget, so that took into consideration our budget adjustments for mid-year. Um, you'll see your Q-three, your fifteen-sixteen, what has been collected, as compared to the Q-three for fourteen-fifteen, so it was collected at the same point last year. So, you'll see at the bottom in the center, six-point-four million has been collected. Last year, at the same point, we were just a little over six million dollars. So, percentage-wise, it's a little lower, but, um, fiscal, financially-wise, we're a little bit higher, but we did also project a little bit higher revenues this year. Our general fund expenses, so July first through March thirty-first, were about seven point three million dollars, almost seven point four. Our spending is at seventy-three percent and the departments are on track with their spending. Um, because we're three quarters of the way through, they should have spent about seventy-five percent, so you can see we're on track. Again, very, very small chart, you can see it a lot larger in the actual staff presentation. So you'll see various departments, what their budget is, their year-to-date spent, the available budget, and then the percentage of budget available, so you can see, um, most of the departments are on track. For our water fund revenues, uh, through March thirty-first, our water fund is at two point, uh, nine million dollars that we have collected. We have collected sixty-four percent to date. Um, initially, our estimates, our estimates were lowered in anticipation of mandatory water conservation efforts. So at the time that we passed last year's budget, we did some anticipation of it. Um, our Q one and Q two report revenue reports for this year were on target to meet estimates. However, our Q three is lower than anticipated and part of that is due to the conservation efforts. Um, unfortunately, our projections right now is that our water revenues will be short approximately four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars by the end of the fiscal year. Um, so that is something that if council would like me to, I can just bring, bring us an update every council meeting or once a month just to keep you apprised of that because that is a lot lower than we initially anticipated. Our water fund expenses, um, through March thirty-first, were at three point five million dollars, our spending is at seventy-two percent. So the departments are on track with what our, um, what our budget was and their spending for the water fund. Next, we have our wastewater fund revenues, through March thirty-first, we're at two point two million, um, you know, almost, you know, somewhere between two point two, two point three million. We have collected seventy-seven percent to date, so the amount collected here is higher than anticipated. It's due to two primary factors, the first is a settlement agreement for Pond One A and then the other is the audit for our wastewater charges where we did the back billing. Um, our estimated water revenues will exceed the projections, um, but that is due again to the one-time, um, revenues that we have received. Our water fund expenses through March thirty-first is two point three million, our spending is at eighty-one percent. Although the spending is showing higher than seventy-five percent, we are on track with the spending in the wastewater fund. Um, the reason there is a differential is because of our water and wastewater bond payments that we had just made. The second item that the council asked us to present, um, at our quarterly update are any checks that were paid over a hundred thousand dollars. So you can see that we did have five checks that were over a hundred thousand. Um, the first is for attorney, um, bills and I just want to make a note, typically it's under that, this was two months that were actually combined. The second is for G D Nelson and that's for the sewer repair, which we had a contract for. The next is a Wilmington trust, so that's our water wastewater bond payments that you'll see that we've made. Um, the next one is Union Bank and again, that's our water wastewater bond payments. And then, um, a payment to Magnolia Oaks and that was for the completion of the El Benito sewer work. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, and you might not have the answer to this tonight, but, um, we knew, uh, we knew that we were going to be conserving water um, and that would impact our revenue, right? We're, we're four eighty-six off what our projections were in that conservation. Is there, um, is it simply that there is that much more water conserved above and beyond what our estimates were? Or is there some issue with billing or the math or something else going on? Because it seems like a big delta.
I would have to research it even further to see exactly where we are off. I did compare what our revenue estimates were for last year compared to our revenue estimates for this year and we did decrease, and I believe it was about five, five percent at that point. Um, Q, like I said, Q one, Q two, we were tracking right on target even with the conservation efforts. And then for the, the last quarter, so basically December through March is when we got the big drop. So I think it was a combination of the conservation efforts and the rain, so people stopped watering.
Got it, that would make sense because, I mean, yeah.
And remember, we blame the mayor for that.
We were planning on the drought continuing, so that puts it in more.
Yeah, more in deficit, so that's the projections with, uh, the four hundred and thirty-four thousand for the end of the fiscal year, that takes into account those, those projections for even, you know, continuing the, the water conservation efforts.
I do think a monthly update would be useful, uh, and certainly, uh, as I recall reading, uh, the, um, um, output of the state water board, uh, when, uh, the mandatory rationing went into effect or reductions went into effect pursuant to Governor Brown's order, it was certainly stated there that, uh, uh, all water providers were going to experience this effect and it's no surprise that we've experienced it as well.
There a state refund for our lost revenue?
Yeah, right. One of those unwanted state mandates. There we are. Any further questions of, uh?
With respect to the, uh, the Pond One A settlement agreement, uh, I assume you're referring to the fact that we receive monies back. Was that allocated to, uh, different departments or was it all allocated to the wastewater fund?
It was all.
The amount we, we, we got back?
It was all allocated to the wastewater fund.
And, and is it correct that, uh, no general fund monies were used for that litigation?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, and then with respect to, um, let's see, there was another, the, the.
Before you leave that point, does it, does our, does our, our wastewater fund include a line item for legal expenses?
Yes, it does, and then during the mid-year budget, um, review, we did an adjustment for the attorney fees and then it was offset by the revenue that was brought in for the settlement.
Perfect. With respect to the G D Nelson construction, that, that check for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, is, is that subject to reimbursement at some point?
I'm going to turn that over to Public Works Director Palmer.
No. No, that's, that's the Charter Sewer Repair Project, so that was, that's the one, uh, we had a collapsing sewer line.
Oh, that's, oh, oh, I see, I, I understood that to be something entirely different, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's a project and it's now complete and we have withholding retention and we'll probably will come the next meeting or the meeting after for the council to accept as complete and file the notice of completion.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? Then we'll accept and receive the report. Thank you very much, Ms. Mitz.
Thank you.
And that takes us to our last item, twenty-one, consideration of proposed approval of resolution, rescinding resolution two thousand twenty-eight and adopting the City of St. Helena's new vision and mission statements. Uh, and this is coming to us from a subcommittee composed of Mr. Doring and, uh, Mr. Pitts. So would either of you wish to speak to it or does?
Uh, City Manager Phillips prepared a brief staff report. I'm happy to present it. Uh, essentially, just as you mentioned, this is a consideration of a proposed resolution, uh, to adopt a new City of St. Helena vision and mission statement uh, and rescind the previous, uh, year two thousand resolution which adopted the existing mission statement. As mentioned in the staff report, for some background, uh, a special city council meeting was held to, uh, develop a City of St. Helena mission statement in nineteen ninety-nine. Council adopted a resolution in two thousand which, um, approved our current mission statement. And then in March of, of this year, a council approved, uh, strategic objectives, council goals. Uh, as a part of that discussion, uh, council members Doring and Pitts agreed to collaborate on writing the city's vision and mission statements, uh, for two thousand sixteen to essentially update it. The proposed vision statement was provided in the staff report, as was the proposed mission statement, and staff is recommending, uh, that the council approve the resolution rescinding the previous one and adopt a new vision statement, vision and mission statement.
All right, any further comments by council? Let me open the public hearing, seeing then, I'll close, oh, you have a public comment? All right, uh, I'll close the public hearing and let me turn to Ms. Kroll first since you weren't involved in drafting this. Do you have any further?
I think they did an excellent job.
All right, and then I'll turn to myself, I've got one word change I would ask you to consider. I think it would be better to say the City of St. will strive to be an economically sustainable, family-friendly, diverse and safe community. Uh, and I want to say strive because in light of our current, uh, budget situation, our structural, financial issues, I don't think the word continue is, is the best word. I think we need to get across that this is our mission, this is our objective and the word strive to me is a better fit than the word continue.
Because we're not economically sustainable at the moment.
But then in five years, we need to change it.
Well, that's all right, but this is for today and I think it's much more consistent.
No, I'm good with that.
With our messaging to say strive.
I'm fine with that, I just wanted to remind the council that the genesis of this, of this vision statement was sort of a combination of the expressions that we had at the goal setting. Uh, and at the end of the goal setting, we were asked, well, what is your vision for the city? And everybody came up with their own unique ideas, many of them were similar. And so this is essentially a summary of what our council has basically already articulated. I thought it would be good, uh, based on that, to have a formal, uh, vision statement for the city so that we can test ourselves as we go along in, in procedure and process to, uh, especially with the mission statement, to, to, uh, essentially compare, you know, the things that we're doing here, uh, we can test that we look back at our, our mission or our vision statement and, and ask ourselves, is this consistent with what we are supposed to be doing here? Um, I, I, I did look at the other, uh, frankly, I didn't even know we had a mission, uh, statement or a vision statement. Uh, so I saw that one and it doesn't, it, my concern is that that one was too short and this one's probably too long, but it does accomplish the goal of sort of setting out sort of a constitution for how we go forward in the city and as a testing ground and as an educational tool. Because I don't know if the entire community really fully understands what the city council does, what, what our city does. And it's, for me, it's an important tool to remind folks that there's a full plate of services that we deliver in all of these areas and that when we make decisions, we keep these core values in mind. So that, that was the purpose behind this, not as an exercise of just, oh, well, we wrote this down and we're, you know, we put it on the shelf. I, I hope it will be a useful tool for us.
All right, could, could we say, you know, on the wordsmithing, the City of St. Helena will can, will strive to be an economically sustainable and continue to be a family-friendly, diverse and then so on and so forth?
Strive to be economically sustainable.
But then, and then after a sustainable and continue to be a, and so on and so forth.
That's fine with me, for sure.
Because I think the other things were, we've either, we've been doing well for a while, um, maybe to the detriment of the economic sustainability and, uh, and are doing well at this point, so.
Again, it's a vision, it doesn't have to be, uh, it's not a truth or falsity question, it's, it's what we are projecting out to the future, say twenty, thirty years from now, that, that's the intent behind that. Originally, the word continue wasn't even in there, it was just will be, this is what we would like to strive for or be, this is how we envision ourselves, so, but I'm okay with either of those changes.
We could just say will be, right, since it is a vision statement and not.
Right.
I would, I would, I would.
That's a lot simpler.
I would use the word strive because it, uh, suggests that it's going to take continuous effort to get there.
Yeah, okay.
So.
That's fine.
I think we have, we have agreement here, let me read, uh, what it's going to be, uh, for the record, uh, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve it. The City of St. Helena will continue, we'll, we'll, start again. The City of St. Helena will strive to be an economically sustainable and continue to be a family-friendly, diverse and safe community which prudently manages its financial and human resources, continues to upkeep and improve its infrastructure, ensures its water security, provides a full range of housing, business, cultural and recreational opportunities and embraces and retains its historic, small-town character, beautiful natural environment and high quality of life. So, uh, at, at that point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, staff recommendation with that change in that paragraph. No, no other change in terms of the second page there.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Black?
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. And with that, we conclude our meeting. Thank you very much, everybody, and, uh, thank you public for sticking it out so long, down to two, but, uh, very dedicated two. And then our reporter as well, and we didn't put him to sleep either.
Trying to be paperless.